If everybody's ready, I show it is six o'clock. So we're going to call to order the regular meeting of the Charter Township of Garfield for December, I'm sorry, for January fourteenth, 2025 with first item disposal leases.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next on the agenda is a roll call members. Anne, you got that?
Schmuckel.
Here.
Agustinelli.
Here.
Laney McManus.
Who'd you say?
Laney McManus.
Here.
McCumber.
Here.
Lapp.
Here.
Corn.
Here.
And Joe McManus.
Here, all right. Next item on the agenda is public comment. We have public comment at the beginning and the end of each meeting. And I believe we actually have a couple of public hearings tonight. So I would suggest if you're here to talk on the subject during a public hearing, you might consider waiting until that item comes up on the agenda. Otherwise, feel free to come forward and let us know what you have to say. So we will officially open up public comment. And as often the case, I don't see everybody running forward to talk, so we will go ahead and close public comment and move on to review and approval of the agenda. I would like to, we'll just make it item F1, in between items F and G under reports, after Parks and Rec and before Clerks, our County Road Commission representative would like to squeeze in there. So he's here to give us a report tonight. So if nobody has any problem with that, we'll be sneak him in there. And then Chris, did you want to add an item?
Yeah, I'd like to add M dot traffic light replacement discussion. Either unfinished, either unfinished business or other business.
Since you guys have already dealt with it somewhat in the past, let's make it item E under other, under unfinished business, if that's okay.
And what is that M dot what, Chris?
M dot traffic signal replacements.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Now, as we move on, looking for anything else, and if we do have any conflicts of interest with the agenda, now would be the time to state those.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
As amended.
Support.
Motion being supported to approve the agenda as we just amended. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therewith and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening, you have minutes, December fifth and ninth, 2024 special meetings, and December tenth, 2024, regular meeting, recommend approval. Bills from the general fund, $217,708.49, recommend approval. Forty Frasier Developers Espero Fund, stormwater reviews, utility plan review, oversight and closeout, $8,451.25. General utilities, $17,604. General, $4,040. Park funds, DNR Trust Fund, $16,790. And specialist assessment district, $712.50, for a total of $47,597.75, recommend approval. MTT update, receive and file. Veterans exemptions report, receive and file. Building Department, 2024 Statement of Operations and Annual Report, receive and file. And zoning department, 2024 Activities, receive and file.
Are there any items on the consent calendar that the board, any board member would like to have removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda? Any items the public would like to have removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda? Any items staff would like to have removed and placed elsewhere? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we, excuse me, approve the consent calendar?
Support.
Motion made and supported to approve the consent calendar. Remind me, roll call on this?
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Lapp.
Yes.
L McManus.
Yes.
And Jay McManus.
Yes. All right, correspondence. I think there were a few in your packet, I mean, at least I had a few, but I think they emptied my mailbox too, so I have a lot of correspondence in my.
We didn't have any.
Oh, okay, then that's all my, I learned I had a mailbox here at the township and I wasn't checking it on a regular basis, so.
Whoops.
Well, you know, I'm not here every day, so we're going to check that more frequently now. All right, moving on then to reports, our Grand Traverse County Commissioners, plural reports.
Hi, everyone. Lauren Flynn, District Two. And I brought along with me Fern Spence, newly elected to District Four. She'll be joining me on Tuesdays. We'll jump in, we did not get, I mean, we've only had one meeting, but we did have an exciting meeting where we elected a new chair and a new vice chair. Bipartisanship, Republican Scott Seifert for chair and TJ Andrews as our vice chair. So it's pretty historic and we're really looking forward to working together with, you know, dedication, communication, and respect. You know, that's what's really important, to make sure we get what needed to get done for the county to move forward in a positive light. A small note, the county is now a sponsor for the monthly recess events, so it's always great to swing through those and see all the great community leaders there. I think those are monthly on Wednesdays, I need to nail that day. I know it was last week at the airport. We will be really doing regular meetings and really focusing on study sessions. So next week, we do have a study session, we'll be going over septic code, Safe Harbor will be discussing what they're up to and how it's looking to open year round. We're going to go over all our legal aspects of what's happening in the county, so it's transparent and open to the public of what we're facing down the road. And also discussing ethics committee, bringing back ethics committee to have that for our county staff as well as commissioners. But tomorrow, we have a month's update on the mental health facility. So Phase One is open. That includes a welcoming center, the crisis phone screening, mobile crisis services, face-to-face crisis intervention, psychiatric pre-admission screening, central service inquiry and referrals, referral to outpatient therapy, and peer support services. It's going to be in four phases, so Phase Two should be open by July first. That will just add on psychiatric urgent care and like a living room atmosphere. Phase Three will be by the end of summer for 2025, and that's going to when the adult crisis residential unit should be open with nine beds. And then Phase Four will be fall of 2025, and that's when the pediatric crisis residential unit with six beds will be open. So we'll be hearing more about that tomorrow. We also are getting a project outfit update tomorrow, which is, A, important to me as well because of the luffranger, where it's a 911 building as well as the facilities, storage. They have reported to us that they, and we'll be hearing this, that they have their preliminary site plan developed already. The title work is completed, finalized the conceptual floor plans for both EOC and the storage building, and they've completed Phase Two of the environmental, environment study. So they're moving forward and we'll hear more about exactly where they're at tomorrow. That is all I have. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, just a really quick, it's nice to be here to serve this precinct. As you might know, Blair Township also has their meeting tonight at the same time, so I will try to make this fair and equitable to you and to them and kind of jump between both meetings. So tonight, I have your, you have my full attention and it's nice to see all of you.
Any questions? As always, you know how to get ahold of us, chucksarangt, gti, countymi.gov. And go Lions.
Thank you. Okay, next up is our sheriff's report.
Roy Raska with Grand Traverse County. I'm glad 2024 is in the rearview mirror. Just with the cyber attack that we had on some of our stats, what I have been able to gather for the year of 2024, which these numbers are fairly low due to the fact we're missing a couple months. Garfield Township, over the past year, deputies wrote 562 citations, the township had one fatality, 70 injury accidents, 366 accidents, 96 OWI accidents, or 96 OWI arrests, and 574 criminal arrests. For the month of December, there's only partial stats, there was 12 drunk driving arrests made in the month of December, 57 criminal arrests were made. Overall, not a lot has changed. We have the same five township deputies still assigned to us, or to the township at this point. I don't foresee that changing anytime soon. They're all doing a real good job and are pretty committed to the township. We've continued to try to have lunches at the Salvation Army, myself, Deputy St. Croix and Deputy Anderson, try to do that about twice a month. We get a pretty good response when we're there, from staff and from people taking, making use of it to get lunches and dinners. And then we'll start meeting with Sarah Lee this week for their big event coming up, I believe it's in April, so. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is GT Metro Fire report.
Good evening, Paul Mackin, GT Metro Fire. You should have in your packet our stats, our Garfield Township Metro Enfers Reports for December 2024, the side-by-side, just to overview that. Medical assists, as usual, our highest call volume, 289 for Garfield Township, as opposed to the 410 for Metro as a whole. Following that, as you follow down the line, our dispatch canceled route, those good intent type calls, 31, 41. And some additional emergency medical services, 13 more in the township and 44 for Metro as a whole. And then just kind of moving down, our alarm system activations with no fire, eight and 11 on the side-by-side. Totals for the township for the month of December was 380 incidents as opposed to the 590 as a whole within Metro, so it was a busy month. Moving on to the incidents by station for December, again, out of that 590 total, our Station 12 came in at 121, at 21% of the calls. Station 11, 27%. Station 1 coming in at 28%. Station 8 at 15, and Station 9 at 8%. The township breakdown, Garfield Township, as I mentioned, the 380. East Bay, 131 at 22%, Acme at 71 incidents at 12%. And then we had just our out-of-area responses, we had eight of those, just bringing about Moving on to the Garfield Metro EMS complaints, falls continue to be one of our highest call types. 58 for the township as opposed to 88 in Metro, followed by difficulty breathing, 45 incidents within the township, and 60 within Metro as a whole. General weakness and the invalid lift assists coming in at 24 each. As you can see then, just a number of different complaints as you run through the report, so a total of 335 for the township and 537 with Metro. Couple highlights, couple things that we have going on here in the new year, our firefighter testing for full-time, we're down one position, trying to get that filled. We did have our physical ability and written exam this past Thursday. We had started with about six candidates, I think we're down to about five right now. We're just awaiting the test results for those to come in. If all those individuals pass, they'll move on to the interviews that are going to take place in January 29th. But all in all, the group that we had, very, very promising, a lot of, a lot of strong candidates there, so it might make it a little bit difficult when it comes down to interviewing and determining. So looking forward to getting that done, getting that position filled, and then having some good, strong candidates are going to remain on our list. The, unfortunately, as we talked about, Jen Froelich took another job, so our fire and life safety educator position, that's open, we're actively doing the recruitment process. There's been significant interest in the position, we're over 40 applicants. Definitely with a very wide range of experiences, some of them are going to be easy to, to, you know, say, all right, maybe not the best. Just one other note, Captain Spencer Scanlon, he was accepted and he's going to begin attending the Eastern Michigan University School of Fire Staff and Command. It's a management-oriented program consisting of 350 hours of competency-based education, and that's spread out over 10 months. So he'll be in that school till October is when he'll complete, so we're happy to have him in that, as we have had some of our other senior officers. So we're confident he's going to do well and it's going to prepare him for future responsibilities. In regards to some calls, just of interest, we have had a few small cooking fires recently in some of our multifamily and extended care facilities. Fortunately, early reporting and extinguishment has prevented them from becoming larger fires. With respect to the current cold weather and things getting pretty close to zero, we've increased our public messaging to emphasize home heating safety with space heaters and wood burning appliances, fireplaces, et cetera. Also in fire prevention, Chief Belcher is working with townships on open burden ordinance revisions, which I think we're talking about or mentioning, and we will be, tomorrow evening, we're going to be holding our annual awards banquet, where we take that opportunity to honor all of our personnel and give them years of service awards and distinguish a few people for special service. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that board might have.
Any questions for the chief?
Okay. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, MMR.
Not that tall. Hello, Amy Fairchild, Operations Manager for MMR here in the Traverse City area and for Northwest. We, y'all are setting some records. We had July-type run volume for December, as did the city and all of our townships. We had 328 here in Garfield. Last December, we were just under 300. The city did beat you out though, they hit 477. We do not want you to try and beat them next month. Calm down just a little. As Chief was saying, falls are our number one call right now, followed very closely by sick person, which is a lot of that influenza and creeping crud that's going around. It's also been able to hit most of my crew, so they can all very well empathize with our patients, but I've told them to quit experimenting that much with the, with the germs. We are, we're still working on our building here in Garfield Township on Park Drive, working with Metro Fire, Fire inspections and all the permitting process, all that stuff, so we're getting closer. Hopefully, we'll be moving in soon. We're anxious to have a little more elbow room and to be in the township. We also are adding to our fleet, Truck 530 will be being picked up tomorrow and brought up here for us to stock and get ready for the state license inspection. That is going into Station 11 here in Garfield Township. They're getting the brand-new truck. It's pretty, it's shiny, and as soon as we put it on the road, it'll get dirty, but we're excited to have this truck and to bring it here to Garfield Township. We have an EMT class that just started last week with 13 students in it. Seven of them have already committed to working with us here at MMR. We're working on the other ones, we'll see how that goes. And paramedic class that'll be starting in March. They're also looking at doing a second paramedic class and a second EMT class in the fall up here. And then somehow, some way, we hired three paramedics last week, and they'll be starting with us next week, and three EMTs that'll be starting with us next week as well. So we're, we're working on it, we're increasing our staffing, but I'm very excited about that. Is there any questions or anything I can answer for you all?
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
All right, Planning Department Monthly Report for January.
So he just submitted his report in writing. The only addition or comment I would have is on High Tops. That was the Tavern Bar, Sports Bar, that was supposed to go into the mall, that it went into Cherryland Center on the, I guess the side closes to Qdoba, the Seer Side. That was met with a lot of contention from the neighbors, and the applicant since withdrew his application for that location. And he is, he intends to submit a new application in enough time to be considered at the next Planning Commission meeting in February. So he is getting his plans, he just received his plans back and his lease with the property owner for that middle section. So I will talk a little bit more about the liquor license in my report and how it relates to all that, but he, you know, we kind of felt like maybe he wasn't moving forward because of the delay, but it appears that he intends to, and submit application pretty quickly, so.
Joe, question?
Yeah.
So the middle section at Cherryland?
Yonkers.
That's where he's looking, the Yonkers piece?
Yep, and, yeah, and he told me that the issue was sound, so he is designing his plan to have all the traffic be like on the front of the mall and not towards the back where the neighbors were concerned. So he's really, he's really trying to address all the concerns, so.
Yeah, well, good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Okay, Parks and Rec.
No, oh, sorry. The Parks report is just submitted in writing, and if anybody has any questions, I can answer them for you.
I was thinking of the Road Commission this morning.
All right. Road Commission, Al.
Good evening, Alan Lehman, your representative on the Road Commission. I asked, I usually ask to be on the agenda at the second meeting because I have a conflict with Peninsula, but you guys have missed and had, not had quite a few second meetings, so I'm trying to, I'll try to get in here, and I thank Joe for letting me in. First thing I wanted to notice you about is the utility detour that's going to happen on M72. The M dot is going to, has said that that roundabout, the area that roundabout is being constructed at 22 and 72 is, was supposed to remain open through flagging and other methods. And the utilities have said they cannot move their lines, it's been somewhat noticed. And they're all going to move their lines together, but it means closing M72. And it's going to, the detour is Gray Road and Goodrick Road and coming down Cedar Run. It's going to be kind of a mess, I think. I want you, anybody who lives in that side of the township, it's going to be for about a month, and it's going to start soon. The utilities have not given us the time, but they're supposed to be ready to, they're supposed to be done with their utility locations so that the project can start in March. So they don't have very much time, and there's seven utilities and a couple high-pressure gas lines and water, sewer, cable, electricity. And so they're going to be using our roads, even though they've decided not to pay us. The, I guess I need to put my glasses on. Last month, I was, we had, we had a nice meeting about Frankie Road with Chris and John, the planner, and the school system talking about improvements there. That road is a local road, it doesn't qualify for a lot of federal funding, and we're looking to maybe redesignate that as a minor collector so we can improve that. The schools have an issue they really, they want resolved there. You know, probably the traffic study they did when they built the school there wasn't super complete. There's a lot more traffic there, there's people, they intend on having people park at Meyer and having a flasher across the road there, they've applied for safe routes to school. And that's probably going to be integrated into the fact that when we redo the road, that'll be installed. They have, they have, they, they say they already have an agreement with Meyer to use some of the area for parking, so the people are going to be coming across the road, because apparently there's not enough place in the queue for all the cars that are dropping off parents. There's a real high load at that elementary school, way more than usual than the other schools, because of, most of the Montessori parents drive their kids. So I think they underestimated that, and we're going to, we're going, there's work on it. I was, I was confident that we'll be able to get something done. I placed at your things before, before the meeting, just a road list, there's nothing super significant on it. Our biggest project that we're funding is Three Mile, and with that, Garfield is our official detour when Three Mile is going to be closed, because there is no light at Town Line. But before we start Three Mile, there's going to be some overlay work to fix up Town Line, not a full reconstruction, because again, that's another local road, and there's no way to fund that out of our budget. But we're going to, we're going to wedge it, overlay it, and I don't know if they're going to get the chip seal done before we, before the detour starts, but I think that's going to be in the part of the package also. We have opened our Kingsley facility, Chuck was, got a preview of it when we did about a few weeks ago. It's a great place, was, you know, it was $12 million, it was expensive. It is a kind of, it's going to last a long time, the Road Commission buildings usually go 50 or some years. The counties around us are trying to get some new facilities, and they're talking, you know, 17, 18 million dollars for the same thing we built, so we got in at the right time. You think, oh, that's a lot of money, but I guess it's good value, and it will, it will serve the community down there for the southern part of the county where there's a lot of growth for a long time. The last thing I had was, and maybe, Chris, you know more about this than I do, but there's been a special assessment request, I think you guys have started for Logan Valley. And I really, there's been some discussion of the differences in the cost between our engineer, and I think maybe Jennifer's done some, some work for us. And part of that is because they thought something that would, that would be, maybe it should be demucked, and you know, it's the river bottom, it's pretty mucky in there, and I don't think we included that in our estimates. I would like to suggest to you as a resident of Garfield Township, that that place really shouldn't be part of the Road Commission system, and maybe the owners should work towards abandonment of that. And then when they rebuilt it, they wouldn't have to rebuild it to Road Commission standards, they could do what they want. And it's not a through, you know, it serves the old Logan Rock Club, the Y, and there's a little park down there, but the rest of it, when you pull in, does not seem like a county road. It really seems like a business park. And to me, that's something that the County Road Commission really shouldn't be involved with long run. And I think that to, for them to, I think they could ask, and I think we would probably be able to abandon it, and then they could rebuild it how they want. And typically, the costs are a lot less, because the, they don't have to do all the things that the County Road Commission has to do to make sure it's a long way. They could get a good local contractor to rebuild the road without all the rigamarole that goes with it. And I'd like to suggest that, you know, as we go forward with this project, that that might be a possibility, when we get these small little links that don't really fit into our road systems that take us from one place to another. That's all I have, if you have any questions. Molly?
Three Mile Road, it's going to be closed from where to where?
From Airport to Hammond. And it's, it's, it's a muck hole in there also, so there's some undercutting work, so it's not a quick fix. It's a little longer, so that's why we're not just maintaining a lane of traffic and doing it, you know, under flagging or something. It's, there's going to, they're going to take some of the bad soils out from underneath it. And there's going to be some longer left-turn lanes in there by the industrial park at the south, south end, it's going to be, and through the school area, it's going to make the turning a little bit easier in there too. Still going to be a two-lane road, but with some, some nice left-turn lanes where it's needed.
On your list, is that under the crack, chip, and seal, or is that a different project?
The crack, chip, and seal is, I don't know, I don't know what you were going to, Joe, I have to put my glasses on.
Or I'm sorry, crush shape, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong.
Yeah, yeah, it's on, it's on the crush and shit, widen for paved shoulders.
I read it wrong.
And that's, that is our major project. That's the most expensive thing we are doing this year.
The same thing from cast. The same thing from Cass to the, to the Hartman, Hartman to the Bridge on Cass, same way.
Yeah, that, that's, I think that's scheduled for next year. Oh, Hartman, Cass to Draca. Yeah, oh, that's good, they're going to overlay that, yeah. And it's, but it's only going to, it's, I don't, I think maybe the length has even been shortened a little bit since that, maybe only to the bridge by what, where it used to be Pepsi.
What's the timing on the MDOT projects? I know they're not in our township, but what's the?
Yeah, well, they're going to, they're supposed to start the Roundabout project, which is a big project in March. And I think our, our engineer, Derek, said the, the Three Mile is scheduled for like June 10th start. And then there's, there's a big project from, you know, in the west side of the county from the Go-Go Squeeze to way out to, in Benzie County line two. And that's, there's going to be a lot of detours and a lot of, a lot of, the southern end of the county. Thirty-one is going to be closed where it goes through the, by Ellis Lake where there's, it's real swampy and stuff in there that they're going to close. And the detour is going to go all the way down to Yucca Road and back up through Interlochen. Because there's no other way, I mean, this is, this is MDOT's project, it's not ours, but there's no other, there isn't any other shortcut through there. So the people coming in from Benzie County are going to be looking for ways to, to go that is not going to be traditional. You know, I, I could see the, the, the Lake Anne, through Lake Anne and to the North Long Lake and Cedar Run corridor, the traffic getting even worse from the, from the westbound migration traffic plus what's happening at the Roundabout. You know, they do say the Roundabout's going to be open, MDOT says, and that's going to be flagged and other traffic control measures. But there's going to be a lot of traffic there through a small place. And a lot of that, whether it's an official detour or not, is, is going to be Barney Road, Cedar Run Road, Harris Road. You can, you can bet on it. So if you live in those areas or use them, just, you know, it'll come to an end at the end of the summer, but it's going to be. Yeah, you can either fix the roads or let them deteriorate. And to fix them, you gotta close them and reroute traffic and, so we have to live with it temporarily. Anything else? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Clerk's report.
I've submitted my clerk's report in writing. Are there any questions on that? Right, we've been working with our accountant preparing for our audit that's going to be coming up in March for our financial audit. And we're still waiting for the Bureau of Elections to announce as who they're going to audit for this past election in November. They usually have it all done by November and we haven't heard any news yet on who's going to be audited yet. So we're all waiting.
Maybe you're off the list this year.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping. Got it for quite some time, every election I've been audited, so we'll see.
And that?
It's it.
And you. Chris, manager's report.
Okay, um, so currently the aquatic management of Silver Lake is done by Restoration Lake Sciences. And there's this special such, assessment district that funds the annual cost to oversee the consulting and the treatment of milfoil. So that SAD is expired. And so we're going to have to re-establish it starting probably in April with our assessors assistants. So we will start that up and I just want to let you know about that. And I'm working close with the Silver Lake Improvement Association on wrapping that all up. They still have to work with vendors who actually provide the services, the treatment, and they're sorting through that right now. But we'll know, you know, currently the amount that's in the fund will cover this year based on past year's expenses. We'll, you know, we'll have to get quotes on what it's going to cost, you know, this year and in the future to know what that sad will need to look like. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I'm working with AT&amp;T on upgrading the cellphone tower equipment on day drive. They're going to be removing and upgrading stuff on that tower and I've been involved in that, that process because we have a lease with them. And at some point, an amended lease will come back in front of you for your approval. So I don't know how long down the road that'll happen, but at some point it will. I met with fire department officials regarding amending our fire prevention ordinance number seventy-one. And what they're hoping to accomplish is adopting the twenty-four fire code. Currently it adopts the twenty-fifteen. So it just, by doing that, back then in twenty-fifteen, we really didn't have food trucks. So there's things that have occurred since ten years ago that the fire, you know, the fire code covers to prevent or reduce injuries and increase safety. So the fire department hopes to do that. They also are hoping to amend it to cover burn barrels where it currently doesn't. So, you know, you know, whether you want to prevent people from burning in a burn barrel or not, the fire department would like that spelled out. If you burn in a burn barrel, it can be anything. You know, it could be trash, it could be something that's harmful to the environment. It may not always be yard waste and stuff. So, you know, I'm just throwing this out there because, you know, I want to have a little bit of a discussion on it so I can give the fire department some direction with hope that they could amend the ordinance, have it go to their attorney and then come back in front of you. Also, currently you cannot burn brush on property, but you, you can in certain instances, in farming instances, for example. But if I owned a five-acre piece of property, I wanted to clean up some brush and throw in a pile and burn it, I can't. It's, it's unlawful per our ordinance. So the fire department, based on, you know, past experience, you know, maybe recommendations from different residents in three townships, they're asking that we potentially open that up a little bit and permit that under certain conditions. And, and that might be, you know, restricted to certain zoning districts, like agricultural. But as they're weeding through this, they're finding that that has some challenges because we have residential areas and agricultural, we have homes in agricultural areas and you may not want that. So they may have to designate it by lot size. You know, five-acre parcels or greater, you know, not within a certain distance of a residential neighborhood. You'd have to burn it with a certain distance from a lot line. So they're, they're just kind of asking for support of, you know, this board is a rewrite this ordinance or, you know, provide us with a draft, that they're not wasting a whole lot of time changing it. So that, that's what they were hoping to get out of us when they met with me. So I kind of liked to just have some brief conversation. Now, this isn't a decision that needs to be made. Is that something that, you know, I would do research, I would look at what other communities are doing, the pros and cons, and then I would work with the fire department and then draft an ordinance that I guess is in the best interest of the township. You know, probably work with the supervisor. And also I worked with the, our building official regarding its conflict. If we're going to upgrade our fire prevention order, does it conflict with the building code and what he does? He told me no, he said it sounds like it's a, it's a good thing. Because the, the, the building, and I'm going to screw this up, the building code references the twenty-fifteen fire code. And because our building code is so far behind where, I guess where it should be. And he said, he doesn't see, even though there's an old building code, he doesn't seem to think that there's going to be a conflict if we were to go forward with it. We haven't, you know, adopted the twenty-four fire code. So I don't know what your thoughts are. Do you, you feel like we keep it the same? Do we, I just want some direction.
Molly?
Do you have to have it tonight? Because it really ought to be an agenda item if we're.
I, I don't, no.
I think, I think what he's just looking for is just to overall, does anybody have a real opposition to it? Then he would put something forward and bring it to the board for discussion.
That's fine.
That's fine with me.
Okay, okay.
I was surprised, and Chris and I talked about this, that it wasn't allowed, even in agriculture. I mean, as a kid, you know, I grew up on a cherry farm, used to pile everything and, you know, the minute there was snow on the ground and you, you called the DNR for a permit and they said, yeah, go ahead and you burned everything, you know, but that's not even allowed anymore, which kind of surprised me quite a bit, to be honest with you, so I think there's.
There must be circumstances where you can, because they do.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, big piles.
Right.
I do have a request. Chris, well, we do have it on the agenda. Can you bring us what other local, surrounding townships are doing? Be easier for.
I'll do some research, I'll put it in writing and have that available to you.
At least, especially the, you know, Acme and East Bay, which are part of Metro. I'm sure they'd probably, probably being asked to do the same thing, I imagine.
They are, and what the fire department would like is it to be consistent across the three townships. Because if you have a, you know, somebody from the fire department who's working in Acme and now they're coming in Garfield and working, they want, it's easier just to enforce the same ordinance. With a police officer, the law is all over Michigan, it's the same. So it's ideal to do that, but they're finding challenges right now because each township is different, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's see, go ahead and start the process.
Okay.
Start looking at it.
And this isn't something they're looking to finish like in two weeks. This is going to be a month-long process to sort it out and come up with a really good ordinance. Talking with our planner, he would like to schedule a study, a joint planning session with the town board. And right now on February twenty-sixth, they have a meeting scheduled between seven PM and nine PM. And traditionally we've done a joint meeting with planning and the town board and that's the date that the planning director asked me to get with the board to see if that would work.
At six or at seven?
And, and that's the thing, so it's a seven o'clock meeting and they're the one who sets their meeting schedule. I'm not a hundred percent sure that we can arbitrarily say we want to start it at six. I think it probably has to be, you know, your, your recommendation that let's do it at sixty-eight, me get back with, you know, our planner to get with his board and them deciding to change it formally.
In the past, I think the Planning Commission has just changed their meeting time to six. We've done this not quite every year, but, you know, I think they've just changed this. We're plenty, we have plenty of lead time here to move that from a seven to a six, so.
So at six o'clock, six o'clock on the twenty-sixth?
That's what we traditionally did in the past, yeah, at six PM.
Just confirmed with John that he's okay with the change and, and the, the Planning Commission will have one meeting yet here in January, so I'm assuming.
Yes.
So, no, it's always a good, good meeting to get with the Planning Commission, so.
Yep, okay, all right. I will work with him in getting that scheduled. And then during that meeting, we are hoping to have a presentation regarding brownfield plans. And, and then you, you probably going to have almost concurrently, at the same time, a brownfield application that will be submitted that you'll have to consider. So we decided it would be best to run them concurrent as to not hold them up. And this is regarding the Marango property on thirty-one. So you'll, you'll be, you'll be educated. We also, I think I talked about a brownfield policy, that the county is developing one. And then we could develop one for us that guides the board on how we handle requests. So that will, you'll have the training on the twenty-sixth and then shortly thereafter have a decision in front of you on whether you want to approve an application for that development. In the brownfield, plans have changed. It's not just about contaminated soils and stuff like that, it's actually to support housing, housing needs. So that's the whole purpose of, you know, this, this complex, wanting to do this. Similar to the Gothier property that we approved last year. The Personnel Committee met to discuss earned, the Earned Sick Time Act that's going to change on February twenty-first. And we also discussed updates to our handbook. So our plan is to align with the new legislation is to bring amendment request of the handbook to the board at our first meeting in February. So it'll give us time to edit, or me time to edit the handbook, get it back in front of the Personnel Committee for their final approval before it comes to the board. I, I did learn that there are some proposed amendments to the law already in the House and the Senate and those are all just introduced. So, you know, I, I can't tell you when they would, if they would be adopted or not. I have to wait and see, but that's, they've already changed things, you know, right away. We're still going to proceed with our, our changes because we still think it'll align with the act regardless of how it's going to change. So we're using some forethought. Liquor licenses regarding High Tops. So what I learned is that through his attorney, High Tops LLC, they have canceled their application. And their license, that quota license that we approved like two years ago, is kind of on a shelf right now. And if you look at the MLCC website, it's available for anybody who may want it. What we would have to do as a board is just submit a letter to MLCC saying we no longer wish for them to have it. We'd like to hold it back and then reissue it to somebody else. I have, the Dog Park developer reached out to me a few weeks ago saying that if you were ever to take that back and want to reissue it, I would be interested. You know, with the fact that I just told you High Tops is expecting to move forward, you know, with their plan, I don't know that it's the right thing to do to, to take that back at this point and just let them proceed. But I figured I, I would give you some, some education on these quota licenses and, you know, what you're, what you can and can't do with them as time may drag on after you approve it. Another thing that I know that, and a lot of times I had found that if somebody is opening up a convenience store or a gas station, they're usually getting a license, they're, they're buying it from somewhere else and moving it in it. It already includes that. So I think that's probably why these are there and we're not getting requests, so. A while ago we talked about purchasing tablets for the board so that way your packets can be emailed to you, you can pull something up on a tablet, you can always have that available to you, you can make notes on tablets. It's just a, a different way to conduct business. And I, and I felt like there was some interest. We never really finalized the decision.
Something up, Joe? Can I bring something up?
Yeah.
I would love that because I still have not received my board packet. Have you neither? So luckily I had not received it, Lori hasn't received it. If we had tablets, it'd be right there.
Yeah, you would.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
I know that I, I have now all the extra boards I'm on. Some of mine, BPW packet was a hundred and sixty-two pages the other day. I just, I didn't print it, I just, that didn't kill, kill three trees. I just took my tablet, brought it up and leafed through it. The only thing I printed off was the agenda, so I could follow the agenda and then go through the packet. So I didn't, I don't know what discussion happened at the board in the past, but I.
I think we should because, I mean, look at, look at how thick this is.
Yeah, we could save a few trees, few stamps and it not, you know, and, and everybody can make their own decision whether they would want to do that or not, obviously. But what I would like to do is bring back to the board like options and what a cost would be. And then you guys could make a decision formally at an agenda item to move forward, so. All right, okay. I, I did include on my, my report here about the traffic lights, but that's been put on to a different agenda item, so I won't talk about it now. I know we have, you know, we, we're improving our website. We talked about improving our social media presence and just communicating with the community a little bit better. And Facebook is a good platform to do that. We have a current one which doesn't have a huge following. And, you know, what I had found when I worked for the sheriff's office is that, you know, somebody creates a Facebook page and they've got the password and then they leave and then nobody can get into the account. And, you know, I, I'd like to create a Facebook page that is, there's a generic password that can be shared with whoever we decide and that can always be passed forward. And, and it's not, what you find sometimes they're attached to a personal account, right? And so I'd like to avoid that. I'd like to create a, a business account that just is Garfield Township's and not connected with anybody who may come and go. So, just, I'll work on that and I kind of feel like that needs to be in conjunction with our Facebook page, our social media presence and also with a plan, if, if you have one, you got to use it. You got to, you have to keep the content fresh if you want to keep people interested in, in reading it. So I am going to create a, a policy on how that will work. You know, whether the park stewards are snapping pictures out in the park with things and then creating a post that's in a draft form that I have to approve before it gets posted. You know, I still have to figure out how that's going to be managed. I just don't want everybody posting everything. I kind of want to have a little control, make sure we're posting the right stuff. And one last thing that I forgot to put down was a bullet point. With the Road Commission, the supervisor and I learned that they're going to meet at the townships quarterly. Actually show up and give us reports, like you did today. I don't think we're going to, I don't think the plan is to see him at every meeting, but we're going to, what appears is to get regular, like weekly updates. And what I will do is pull stuff off that weekly update that relates to Garfield Township. And I will put it in my report so you're kind of updated as. And I will put it in my report, so you're kind of updated as well. And, and if something requires further clarification about, you know, what's going on in this road because it may not be detailed in the report, I'll figure that out. I just want to be helpful in keeping you updated. You know, I know they have limited staff, they can't be here all the time. They're, they've really, really picked up the communication, I feel, as of late, and I think that's appreciated. And I think that's it for my report.
Thanks, Chris.
If you have any questions, let me know, otherwise.
Ending for Chris. All right, well, they haven't, they haven't browbeat me enough to put mine in writing yet, but they are working on it. So I'm still, they're still trying to get me to put my report in writing. I'll just do it verbally tonight. A couple of things, BPW meeting we had last week, they announced the new director. They've been negotiating when, when he can start. It looks like it's going to be end of April. There was, you know, they offered him the job, it was, "I can start in July, no, we want you in February." So they've come to an agreement on April. So when I asked the board, I said, "Well, when you, when you interviewed this people, did you give them a date? You wanted them to start the job?" And they said, "Well, no, we never thought about that," you know, so I don't know why they didn't do that. But I thought that's one of the first things they should have done. But, so end of April is when it looks like this new person's going to start. He's going to come in in February and spend a week with the staff and then fly back. He's the manager of the Nantucket Airport in, out in Nantucket, so. So it looks like a pretty good candidate. We also, Chris Forsythe from the county came and gave us an update on Alpha. I think our county commissioner mentioned Alpha, and it's moving that campus out to Lefraine here. Because BPW has a big portion of that Alpha campus, it's going to be their, their portion as well. So we did get an update on that as well at the BPW meeting. The, this week, not with, I'm sorry, on the 31st of January, the TC Connect has their day-long policy conference. And we have a table there, I think there's six or eight, six, I think, seats at that table. If anybody has the interest in spending the day at that policy conference, get with Chris. I know there's at least a couple of tickets left, a few at that table. So the policy conference is on the 31st. Sounds like it would be pretty educational to be at. Unfortunately, with work commitments, I can't be there for that, but Chris is going to be there. So if you have some interest, get with Chris on that. Couple of things from a water standpoint. If you remember our meeting in, in December, we instructed our attorney to draft a revised contract back to the city trying to resolve the Long Lake water connection issue. That did take place, the revised contract was reviewed and approved by, by Jennifer. And Chris and I looked at that and our lawyer, and it has been resubmitted to the city, but no response. It's been in there, Jennifer, what, two weeks probably, or three?
It was December 23rd.
Okay, December 23rd, so three weeks it's been there. We haven't gotten a response from them yet. So still waiting on that, but we did, I wanted to get everybody in the loop on that. That was a, came out of that meeting we had back in December, I think the 5th, if my memory is good. And then in your packet.
Joe, real quick, is there a timeline on that response?
Jennifer, did we give them a little timeframe? Probably a good idea, but we're still waiting on a couple of other things too, so. But we'll, we're gonna, Jennifer's going to talk a little bit about some, some next steps a little later under discussions on the water system as well. But if, if, is, I don't know, I can't remember what everybody was involved in the conversation. But after all, the communication with the city, then they came back and wanted to buy water back from us and supply half of the city with water and, and. So we asked Jennifer, they asked Jennifer to review the, that proposal. And there's a five-page letter in your packet that is our engineers' review of that and opinion on that proposal. So you can read that and come to your own conclusions on that, I think, so. That's pretty much everything I had, so. Any questions or comments or concerns for me? All right. Well, moving on then, we'll go on to unfinished business. The first item is item A, public hearing, consideration of stormwater control ordinance number 49, amendment one, and it is resolution 2025-01-T. So we have that on our agenda, so if, I will just go ahead and open up the public hearing and see if there's any comments or questions about this stormwater control ordinance. Guess nobody's here to talk about stormwater tonight, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for your consideration.
Mike Green is here if we have any questions.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Mike Green is here.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike, I need, if anybody has any questions for Mike? I didn't know if he was here to talk to this one or not.
Yeah, both actually.
Good evening, Michael Green, zoning administrator. I can go over the packet again if you like, or just be here to answer questions, so.
It might be helpful, just a quick reminder of why is it that we're updating it?
Okay, yeah, sure. Right, so this is a, this is an interim update to the stormwater ordinance. Our intent was to address some of the administrative language in the ordinance, mainly things that address the county as being a part of the ordinance. And this is because of our drain commissioner, Andy Smits. He asked us to do so because there's a lot of references to him as an enforcement agent, and he has no interest in being that, and, and we respect that and wanted to make sure that, you know, everything is directed toward the township. So that's why we're doing the interim updates to the ordinance. As I mentioned last time I was here, we are moving forward on a more comprehensive update to the stormwater ordinance and, and partially to address some of the concerns that some of you brought up last meeting as well. So John Psych is facilitating monthly meetings between myself, him, our, our engineers here. Jennifer's part of that. And I believe we're going to invite Andy Smits if he wants to come along too, so. Because he has some thoughts on what he would like to see townships include in their ordinances, so. So he's kind of a part of this conversation as well, so. So that's kind of the why we're here.
Any other questions for Mike?
Mike, is, is there anything substantial other than, because when I looked, it was primarily just changing the county to Garfield Township.
Right, right, no, there's really nothing beyond that. The only other, yeah, we did that. Other, we also changed the appeals, the appeals board from the county construction board of appeals to the township construction board of appeals. And there's a different name for it, I believe, but, but they're essentially the same type of body, so. But other than that, no, there's really nothing substantial here.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt resolution 2025-01-T, amendment number one to ordinance number 49, Garfield Township Stormwater Ordinance be adopted.
Support.
Most mean supported to approve the resolution 2025-01-T, the amendment to ordinance number 49. Any further discussion on that, any questions? Okay.
Did we close the public?
If not, we'll ask for, I'm sorry, roll call vote?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Okay, was it?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
Laney McManus?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
And Joe McManus?
Yes, thank you. All right, next one, I don't know if Mike's here for that one as well, but we have a public hearing and consideration of the soil erosion ordinance number 78, resolution 2025-02-T. All right, do you want me to just open up the public hearing first?
Yeah, if you want.
All right, so we'll go ahead and open up that public hearing. If anybody has any comments or questions about this resolution or this ordinance change.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Nice to see you. I, I just want to make sure that, um, Hi Fern Spence. You know, I was going around the neighborhoods this fall canvassing and not getting indoors and meeting people. I saw a lot of really bad soil erosion runoff in some of the HOAs. It's, and it's hard to enforce. Like, I think it'd be really difficult if it were my responsibility to enforce that. I also saw a lot of lighting violations too. So I just understand, like, when you're doing these code enforcements, it's very difficult. So I hope that if the responsibility is, is taken from the county to the township, that it, these are going to be very enforceable, these soil erosion issues, because it does go into our, our bay, and that's one of our biggest assets in our county. And I've seen a lot of sand and debris that runs not only into stormwaters, but also, or stormwater basins, but also soil erosion. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment, public hearing, excuse me. And Mike, if you'd like to address any questions or comments you'd like to make.
All right. Okay, so I'll do, just kind of do a brief overview again. So we're back here, the state gave us the approval of the ordinance and some other items, including our forms and applications, our fee schedules and things like that. So, so basically, they said, "Go ahead, take the ordinance to your township board, ask them to adopt it. Once that's done, we would send that, send the ordinance back to the state with a stamp and seal on it." And they would basically record it, and they would recognize us as a municipal enforcement agency, so. I did want to maybe address Fern's comments too, you know, just to provide some assurances on the enforcement and administration. I talked about a little bit, but we, you know, I think our idea is that we're, all of our people are out in the field already. Our enforcement officers, our parks people, our building officials and ourselves. And we're all seeing what's going on throughout the township, so. I think, I feel that we have the resources to administer this program. And, you know, and if we need more help, you know, we can come back and ask. But we do have the fee schedules in place to bring the revenue into the township, so. And that leads to one thing, I did forget to put the fee schedule on the agenda. I talked to Chris, he was okay putting on your next meeting agenda. So really isn't going to hold anything up because of the process of getting the state's final approval. It's going to take at least two weeks. So in the meantime, Karen's going to put the resolution together with the fee schedule and bring it back to you for your next meeting. So we did bring a draft fee schedule. It was pretty much the same as the county's with a few minor changes because we're not doing the same, our ordinance is not exactly the same as the county's. So we're not enforcing all the same things, we don't have the same applicability as they do, so. So our, our fee schedule reflects those minor differences. But otherwise, our fees are pretty much the same as the county's. When the state reviewed the fee schedules, they sent it back to the county health department. Brett Wheat is their director. He agreed that being consistent is probably a good thing, so the state also agreed with that, so. So that's kind of our starting point. If you want to change the fees, we can have that conversation, you know, at our next meeting. There's nothing required, it's just more advisory, I guess, as far as fee schedule goes. So, so I just want to throw that out there as well, so. But anyways, yeah, that's pretty much it, unless you have any questions.
Molly?
Yeah, I have a question, I was kind of at Fern's point. I'm looking at our little flow chart here, and are these building and land use assistants, are they certified to do the soil erosion? Who's doing them? How many inspectors do we have and?
Three. Jamie Douglas and I are certified as inspectors and as administrators. Carl Stidzinski, and I, he's semi-retired, but he's already agreed to help us with soil erosion. So he's the third, he's a, he's a certified inspector. Brian is our new building inspector. I think we talked about getting him certified as soon as possible and possibly one of our park stewards as well, so. So if we, with that, we would have five people.
Five possible, and do you know how many does the whole county?
I don't know. So I don't. It seems to me, and I think it's about been a year, it seems like the county had, I don't know, 400 permits and like 1,500 inspections that they did annually in Garfield. So that's the workload. And so I, you know, I am not totally up to speed on the process and the time that it takes to do inspections. I'm sure everyone's different. But to his point that this is something new, and as we go forward, we do generate revenue. And if we have to, you know, adapt to how we're handling them or add more staff, be more efficient in certain ways, we'll certainly do that, so.
I, I like that you're cross-training from different departments, so people can know how to do it.
Right, right.
Thanks.
Yeah, I did have one other comment too, on the site plan review for, mainly for commercial projects or anything other than single or two-family residential. Jennifer's, I've talked to her throughout this process, and she's agreed. Now I'll let her chime in if you, if she wants, but I believe they're, they're willing to do the plan review on the soil erosion because it really ties in pretty much with stormwater review, which they're already doing, so. Our fees can kind of go toward that, so they're, you know, they're doing a consolidated review for stormwater and soil erosion, so. So they, they would also be a part of the program here.
Any other questions for Mike? If not, I would.
Did I make a motion that resolution 2025-02-T adopting ordinance number 78, Garfield Township Control of Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Ordinance be adopted?
Support.
Motion made and supported to adopt, approve resolution 2025-02-T, which is the ordinance 78 for soil erosion, and that be adopted. Any further discussion or questions on that motion? Hearing done, it asks for another roll call vote?
Corn?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
L. McManus?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
And Jay McManus?
Yes, all right. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, got that one. Next item is the discussion of our water system. I believe Jennifer, you can kick it off or just let Jennifer come up?
Um, yeah, I, I think, so to his report that he gave earlier, we just wanted to have a discussion on our water system. You know, you know, currently, we buy water from the city to provide to our residents, and we operate under a 20, 2003 contract. And it dictates how much water we're allowed to use, 5 million gallons per day. And, you know, I think it's important to have a conversation of where are we at with our use? And what does the future look like? And is there enough capacity within our current contract to serve our needs? So I, I felt it was time to have that conversation because right now, we're in the middle of negotiations with the city and, you know, right now, we're, they believe that we're using more than are, are contractually allowed to do. But, you know, from our research, it appears that that's not the case. And, you know, Jennifer can talk to the point about, you know, how do you calculate use? And, you know, try to clarify it so you can understand it. But, you know, at this point, like supervisor said, we do have a, a draft contract to the city regarding an extension that was done into Long Lake Township. We're waiting to get that back. And, and then also, you know, there should be conversation about, does the current contract need to be amended? But I, you know, I want Jennifer, who's our resident expert in our water system, to be able to answer questions and let you know where we're at. You know, what, what developments do we have on, on the, on the books, so to speak, that we're waiting for city approval? I believe Eagle has approved all the permits, but now we're waiting for the city to review and approve. And, and that is kind of holding up some development. and approve, and, and that is kind of holding up some developments. And again, the reason that is happening is because the city believes that we may be using more than we're contractually allowed to. And then, you know, there's going to be future developments, and, and if, if we're, we're near or getting close to our 5 million gallons a day, what do those future needs look like? And what do we need to do to be able to support them? So, I, I think, I don't know, if Jennifer, you want to come up and you can answer some questions and give some context?
Jennifer, right before you start, if, would you refresh my memory, when is the current contract with the city due to inspire?
I believe it's 2028, so it's a 25-year contract.
We have three years, we have three years left on our current contract, yes.
So it'd be January 23rd, yeah, 2028. Okay. And thank you, yeah, so Jennifer Graham, Gordy Frazier, and, yeah, I mean, some of you guys have been very intimately involved, I'm glad to see Trustee Corn on the board to help share this, so depending on how long you guys want to talk about water, you know, I love it, normally. It's, it's been a very, yeah, it's been a very interesting process for myself, and, it's trying to remain technical and professional and objective, it, it's a struggle sometimes, you try not to take things too personal. So with that being said, I guess, just a quick highlight of timeline, and some of this I had brought up during public comment, I think at a board meeting in December perhaps, but, you know, a lot of this perpetuated after Cedar Run Black Bear Farms connection, which happened over a couple of years ago, but what initiated where we're at right now was a letter that we got originally from the city back in April, and maybe even before that, there was some email communication, but a formal letter we got from the city, which I believe most of you have seen, was several outlined parameters and concerns expressed by the city, related to master meters, our water usage, Long Lake connection into another township, and, you know, just our usage and what the township's intent were to control that usage. So, from that, we had a meeting with the city, and our previous DPW director in May did a follow-up response with, and I believe response from Mr. Corn too, in a letter that addressed those items, specific to the master meters. We are in the process of replacing those, but we have demonstrated to them, and they should be aware of this, whether they acknowledge or not lends itself, but they are functioning. We're just in a process of replacing them due to age, and just to be proactive to integrate new technology, so that we can do real-time readings. Those meters right now are only able, they don't have SCADA with them, so we can't monitor them remotely, they have to physically go read them monthly, but they do function. And the one that was not functioning has already been replaced, and that actually took place prior to that letter coming out from the city. So some of it was an education in that regard. We also sent, DPW director sent a letter to all the customers in Garfield, requiring them to moderate their irrigation schedules, and even in odd numbers respectively, to alternate. And that was a means for us to work on our water conservation measures. And so that was sent out. We also, this board, as you guys are aware, increased water rates, and as a means to, you know, be compensated back for costs, but also as a means for conservation measures as well. And so that was part of that letter, that was sent to them as an initial response in May. Moving forward, we did a high level of evaluation and review of our water usage, because we are contractually limited to 5 MGD, and it's based on meters that are read monthly, which generates what we call a monthly average, and that average, we applied a peaking factor, which dictated what the actual meter reading was, that we use, and they gauge for contract. And Mr. Corn and I worked on this extensively, and determined and reviewed through the files that a peaking factor that was used by DPW and interpreted was actually incorrect, it was a planning value of 1.5 that we use for, just as it sounds, working on master plans and future projections, but in all actuality, true peaking factor value is a, a number that is derived and computed based on the city's plant production, which was a value we weren't given. So we actually requested from the state of Michigan, they ultimately gave us the correct peaking factor for that respective year and applied it, and were able to regenerate what were actually our true value of usage for water consumption, and demonstrated, we feel, sufficiently, created a new memo, sent it to the city for the last seven years of what our actual water usage was, gauged against the 5 MGD. In that memo, it was translated ultimately, the highest value that we saw using the correct measured peaking factor, we were using about 4.4, was the highest. So that was sent to them, and that was a huge level of effort, and very exciting for Mr. Corn and I to work on, that was just before he went on vacation, so he went and did that to celebrate, but good for him. That was sent on November 23rd to the city. They acknowledged. And then, in sync, as our Supervisor McManus indicated, we also, through this board's approval, followed up, because another issue for the city was the Long Lake agreement. The city had prepared an alternate agreement to include us, but really, it was a direct agreement between the city and Long Lake Township, which the direction of this board was not something that was favorable. We worked with legal counsel to redraft that and sent them a modified agreement that was a lot more simpler, keeping it consistent with the original intent that we had between Long Lake Township, and that was sent on, I think, December 23rd, is that correct? So, from our perspective, everything predating back to that April 29th letter has been adequately addressed, and then some. And at this point, we are still status quo with the city. We continue to get letters from them, we recently got a new letter for a development requesting a permit, that they're poised and ready to issue the permit, but they're still referencing that April letter, which, so it puts us kind of at a standstill, and grouping with staff, manager, and supervisor, our thought process now is, knowing that we're at this impasse, is a recommendation that we want to come to this board is to basically do a formal ask from the township board to the city commission, because the, the meetings, the engagements that have been taking place have been between attorneys, have between, been between city manager, city staff, and, and have not been productive at all. And going back to the inherent language in the contract, when we're at a point where we're at 80% capacity, you know, the ownership and requests can come from the township professionally to the city requesting for additional capacity, should the need be present, which, again, we've demonstrated that we're using under our capacity, we've met all the parameters, a big concern to them was that Long Lake agreement, which we've addressed, but we haven't even gotten response whether they like the changes or amendments. We continue to get pressed by developers who have already gone through the approval process through Planning Department, where we've submitted permits for Eagle, and these are developments that date back as far as April, and some of them, significant housing developments. And it's extremely concerning. We also have new developments coming in, and we don't have any direction whether we're in a position to review them, because I don't want to commit myself professionally, you guys professionally, in any position, so there's just, there's a lot of balls in the air, and no direction, and if we continue, I, I mean, I, I just see it as some delay tactics, there's probably some other adjectives, but with that being said, I, you know, I, I find myself just recommending to this board that we just need a formal request from a township board to the city commission. We have had multiple meetings with staff, city staff, and it hasn't, we haven't gotten any formal action either way. I'm probably missing some key points, but I do know, before, we, we did have opportunity for Eagle to intervene in some respects, because I went to them, because that's a means of recourse in the contract as well. They did take the opportunity to have an independent meeting with Garfield Township to get our take on items, and they did recently have the same opportunity with the city. And it was the same recommendation from Eagle, that it's very apparent that we've got two parties that have disagreements with each other, distrust with each other, too, was the words that came out of it, on both sides, and that was also their recommendation, is formal request from one municipality to another.
I just have one question, and I don't know if you can answer this, does the city commission even know this is going on?
That's, and that's what I wonder, because our only communication has been with the city DPS, attorney, and manager.
Yeah, I think we need to go to the city commission.
And we just keep getting the runaround, and, and I can speak to flows and capacity too, I have spreadsheets and charts, I just, we didn't feel at this point it was something we wanted to put in the board packet, but we can definitely talk about those as far as projections, from what I'm seeing, because, I mean, as we can appreciate, we're at 4.4, we have permits in queue, I have been keeping track of all the developments that have been permitted over the years and their growth, and accounting for those, I mean, we have to be honest, that we are getting near to needing 5 MGD, and then if we continue down our projected growth patterns, because historically, what we're seeing, and I had shared some of this with staff, on average, the township sees about 2% in their water customer growth. And if we continue those trends, we account for some of the larger developments, say Olson's or Gothier property that we have spoken about. You know, ultimately, we're, we are in a position that looking even five years out, we're at or near 6 MGD, and then in 20 years, we're closer to a threshold of around 8 MGD. And that's just, like I said, very high level, but it, it is being realistic, that the need is there, and looking for guidance from this board, I think it, it definitely is an opportunity, you guys have a master plan, you have a vision, and if it's the consensus of this board to continue to want to provide municipal water supply to its residents, that needs to make, be made known to the city, and to get their corresponding response back. If they're in a position to complement that and support that, that's great, and if they're not, then at least we know, and then we can plan accordingly on paths to move ahead. And it's just appropriate and respectful and professional in proper planning to do that.
Yeah, so you're well familiar with our water ordinance, correct?
I hope so.
Yeah, I mean, so, in a nutshell, why do we have it? What is the purpose of it?
Well, the purpose of it, and it's inherently written in the water ordinance, and it's identified in your master plan too, it's, it, it's not intended to support growth, it's, it really ultimately was intended and developed, just like the sewer, to promote environmental health and safety for our customers, you know, because, and Eagle supports that same position, we've, we've asked them point-blank, they don't want to see clusters and individual onsite water, wastewater systems, they want to see regional systems, because that continues to promote that. So you have means to monitor it, clean drinking water, sampling, treatment, fire flow for health and safety, and same for the sewer, and you have those proper separations, and no cross-contamination, and again, it's, it really is driven by health and environmental safety, is ultimately the goal.
So we, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So we could just tell all the developers to put wells in, but obviously, that would conflict with what you just said.
Right, and your, your ordinance allows for onsite, they don't, even if a water main is, fronts their property, they're not mandated to connect, but most times, they're not, they do want the benefit of municipal water, not even from a drinking perspective, but fire flow, it has impact on your homeowner's insurance, or any dwelling insurance, when you have a power outage, you have water supply. You're not, you know, filling your toilet bowl, you know, so you can flush the toilet, you know, you, there's a lot of safety parameters, and, yeah, to advocate in our industry for municipal water and sewer both, yes.
So you should prioritize looking up to municipal water versus wells?
Correct, yeah.
So, you know, from my standpoint, as I've, you know, been getting involved in this and learning, you know, no pun intended, been drinking from a fire hose, you know, engaging with all this, there's a, there's a, a couple of things that came out, and in the way I understand the contract, we're not only probably obligated, I think we're required, when we hit 80% of our capacity, we're required to request more water. So, or at least should, if not required.
Yeah, we did, we did have that discussion.
Yeah, so...
And we agreed that we should go into a discussion, and we've contacted them repeatedly since then, they haven't responded.
Right, I mean, if we go back to the memo you showed us from 2001, I think they, the city suggested we sit down and negotiate additional water capacity, so it should be no, not a new idea. So, as we sit here, and, and from where I'm sitting, we're just, we're stagnant, we're not moving, all right, we've got to, we've got to move the needle, somebody's got to make a move, so, I mean, officially, I asked Jennifer to come here tonight and say, "Look, okay, Chris and I talked about this, let's, let's officially request, we're asking the board to approve a letter, either from, from me or from the board, I don't, I don't care, officially to the city commission, requesting whatever the number is, you know, if it's, is it six, is it 6.5, and just make the request, because we know that we're going to need that water in the, in the future, we know that. And if, if they're unable or unwilling to supply us with water, we have to, we have to find alternatives to that. And there are alternatives, and we just, then, then it's a different narrative and a different direction we go. You know, they, they own the water plant, I guess it's up to them if they want to sell us more water, but we, we have a case for it, we have a contract. What's frustrating is we have a contract, and they're accusing us of not following the contract, but they're not following the contract. And they're making requests, you saw in our packet, the request about the commons, and you read in your packet, her response, Jennifer's response to that. There's nowhere in our contract that even allows for that type of, of an agreement to be made. So, they want us to follow the contract, but they're formally requesting we not follow the contract. So, it's very frustrating, and I don't get all into the weeds on it at this point, but I think, following the contract, we, we stay straight to the contract, we take the high ground and make the request, and, and to the commission, to your point, I ask exactly the same question Denise asks, does the city commission know what's going on? Maybe they do, I don't know, I really don't know.
Well, and I didn't talk about the commons yet, so, and I will, because it's tied into it.
Your letter was in our packet earlier, under my report, that's why...
Oh, thank you.
So they've, they've read your letter.
And to Mr. Corn's, yes, point, we, we do, I have meeting minutes, we had a very cordial meeting in 2016 with the previous city manager, discussing that exactly, asking for additional water capacity, and as I indicated, it was a very cordial, receptive meeting, and we, we do have different individuals in that role now, and it's, we're met with a lot of obstacles at this point, and I, I agree Denise, I, I think the same thing, I, I wonder, I don't, we don't know what the city commission knows, and, you know, and I grapple with this, and had some discussions with some of you on this, but I think, at this point, I mean, just doing a formal letter to the city commission, giving up, and then giving opportunity to speak at a meeting, if, if they let you, our, you know, the township's position, maybe we'll get further along, because right now, and Spring will be here soon, and we've got developers that are going to be knocking on the door again, who have already gone through steps of approval, and just waiting to install utilities. And there's, I think about six of them at the moment, and there's three or four that are not that far behind, that we need to give them some direction as to, if, do they have to look for new water sources, drill wells, which I, it's not something I would recommend, we, you know, we haven't invested, you haven't invested this much in your infrastructure to start seeing independent type 1 water systems, or them connecting elsewhere.
Based on, you're reading about new ground contamination every day out there, so drilling wells to supply clean drinking water doesn't make sense, it really doesn't, it's not in the best interest of, of our citizens and residents, so we just need to get it moved off that center. So, yeah, Molly, go ahead.
So a couple of comments, we can't place ourselves in a position where one of the goals that we have is providing housing and increasing a commercial base, because the city doesn't want us to do that.
Right.
I don't know what their motivation is, I have no idea what, what all that is, but we, it's not responsible for us to head in that direction, so I got to ask the question, how long would it take for us to build our own process, water processing plant, and be done with that? That's one question. Do they have the capacity to provide for us, is another question. If they don't have the capacity, they should be telling us that now.
Right, exactly. It, it, it varies depending on who you ask, I found, and I think a couple of you have seen that too, at, at times, or at one point, it was indicated, oh, the water plant, their existing water plant, may not have capacity. Now, a recent letter or communication, don't quote me, was, there was some transmission lines that may or may not have adequate capacity to meet our needs, but I go... But I go back to the water reliability studies that were all mandated to do every five years, and I even asked Eagle this. There's nothing in their documents that indicates that they have a capacity restriction. And if I just look purely at their water usage, our water usage, there is room for them to accommodate our growth. And then there's also language, as you guys know, that upgrades that they do, there's costs and computations, but we would share in those costs, just like we do, like with the wastewater plant, that they're doing upgrades. There's a cost sharing when they're doing replacement and upgrade. And Mr. Corn knows this much better than I do, but there's already mechanisms. So I don't think it's a dollar. You know, cost concern, I, I'm, I don't know if it's a control, I don't know what it is. And I, I think we need to take this opportunity to essentially formally ask them and get them to provide feedback. What is their position? Cause I don't know what it is.
And that's when, we talked about this, Nate, exactly your point, Molly. We're on, we're in the last three years of a 25-year contract, correct? Okay, so we need to be looking 25 more years down the road if we're going to sign another 25-year contract, if we are. So the, the ask is going to be an ask of what's, what's our estimated water need in 20 years?
Yeah.
Alright, so when we, that's going to be the ask, okay? And if, to Molly's point, if they say, no, we cannot supply you with that water, then we have to find another source. We have to, we have to investigate alternatives to that. And, and we can't, we really can't wait. We can't, we can't just wait and see what happens.
Well, there seems to be a difference between the philosophy of how people.
I don't know what that was.
The philosophy of, of what they want to do as far as housing.
Right.
Increasing size, development, all, all of those things. If this happens to be a mechanism to control growth outside of the city limits, that doesn't make me very happy.
Right.
And, and so I know that there's a difference. We're go, 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 and they're not, not. So, yeah. I think we send a, send some kind of a resolution to them saying, within so many days, we need to know.
Right, yeah.
What's, what's on your mind here?
Right, right. We need to put a deadline on it.
Well, right, and, and I know, yes, Laurie, you had asked that question, and I don't think the lawyer, when he forwarded it on, put a timeline. And, and that's important for us too.
Right.
And whether that require, you know, and if they need to do a study session with us or whatever the dynamics of that looks like, but yeah. I, I don't know what they know. And maybe they do know, and that's how they're directing staff. But it's courteous and again, it's planning and it's just appropriate that we need that feedback so that you guys can then plan accordingly.
And there's just so many, as we dig in and not to get off in the weeds, but contradictions between, you know, memos and emails coming from the same people that tell opposite stories of the same, same thing. You know, I didn't know anything about that. Well, five years ago, you knew all about it. So it literally, and, and so we're, we're just not feeling like we're getting a straight story right now, and we don't know why. And we don't know who. So by going right to the city commission, making the request from the town board, through whoever, you know, I'd be glad to go and present the letter and be there, you know, and answer questions when that letter is read publicly. Because I think it's important. It's, you know, we, Jennifer mentions six applications. And she mentioned Spring's coming quick, right? You mentioned those two things a little while ago.
Yeah.
These applications that are sitting here un, unapproved are from April. We're not very far from April. We're talking about a year. We've got, we've got applications that are sitting there for a year. We have, we have the, the Grand Travers Band out there at Wendy Hills, or whatever the name of the place is out there, you know, they literally have people living in the pines because they can't get water to these houses up there, and they've told us that. They have, they have Grand Travers Band residents, members, living in the pines, and they have houses sitting in Wendy Hills, but they don't have water because the city won't let us look up to it. Now, you know, why isn't that being talked about? Okay? So, you know, that's, that's what we're dealing with. And correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, that's exactly what we're dealing with here. It's pretty ridiculous.
Let's do it.
We have to, we have to move this thing off dead center and start moving. Yeah, Chloe?
In our resolution or letter that we're sending to the city, would it be appropriate to also address our six applicants and ask for some response on that? Because to me, that's really important, that we figure that out for them. Is there, I don't know, would that be appropriate to include?
No, I think so.
That we would like some direction on how we can get those permits approved. I, I don't know, how do you guys feel?
I feel like that. I agree.
Well, because.
Well, you're, I think, and I could be wrong, but we, we kind of are doing that because they're saying they're not approving their applications because we don't have enough gallons per day. Well, then give us more gallons per day. And then they have no reason not to approve the applicants. I think you're, you're touching on a very exact issue here, but I think we, we just ask if they, we can, we can debate the peaking factors all day long. If they, if they don't want to, if they want to ignore the facts, then fine, then, then sell us eight million gallon a day then, okay? And then it becomes a moot point. We'll remove that obstacle from them. Maybe.
Do you just need a motion then?
Well, Jennifer, what do you recommend? A motion from the board?
Yeah, personally, I would, yeah, it's just support from this board, because I will work with staff, you know, because I'm not signing it. But whoever you guys want to direct, to be the signatory, but I'll work with staff to draft that letter up. I mean, the intent, it's, it's simple, but yet it gets our point across of, you know, this is what you, essentially you guys keep coming at us with, and we've responded to these with dates and, you know, this is per the, you know, referencing some language per the contract, this is what we're asking for. And we're requesting the city commission to respond and acknowledge us within, you know, 45 days, 60 days, whatever you guys feel appropriate.
I have a question. If we're going to put them on some sort of a timeline or a deadline, what's our negotiation?
Well, I think.
What can, who, we don't pay them? What do, what?
Well, I mean, I guess where we're, where we're coming at, we've addressed everything in that April 29th letter they keep coming at us with.
Right.
So there's nothing more we can do.
They can't shut the water off.
No, I mean, we have a contract for.
We have a contract for at least the next three years.
Yeah.
So how do we make it in their best interest?
Yeah, no, I know what you're saying. We can just, yeah, we, we don't.
I think the key is the tribe.
Ahah.
Where a group of people who at the beginning of every meeting gives thanks for the fact that the tribe, this is the tribe's land that we live on.
Point.
But then they won't approve water for their housing project.
Then that needs to be part of that letter.
That is, that is a major embarrassment, I would think, to the city.
So in closing, we can remind them there's some critical developments that are waiting for permit approval, including.
The tribe.
The tribe.
Enlist them all.
Enlist them all out, right.
Yeah, it's, it's very frustrating. Yeah, Chloe.
I also think just mentioning that we may be looking into alternative water sources would be a huge.
Well, and that's.
Factor that you may want to politely include.
It's going to be vague enough that we're looking, that we need to be prepared and it's appropriate that they provide us feedback for our planning because the township does want to continue to provide municipal water, that if the city's not in a position to do that, we need to plan. And so just kind of in closing.
Communicate that.
Yes.
Yep.
And I don't want to list what those alternatives are, you know, it's.
But I didn't want to have that letter drafted without this board's recommendation.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Our responsibility on the board is to do that, and I think they should say that. That the Garfield Township Board responsibility is to take care of their citizens, and they need to have water.
And, right, the board made that.
How are we going to provide that?
Right.
And either you guys can help us or not help us, but let's figure that out.
So in that letter, it's kind of two-fold. It's the existing permits, but then for planning to continue advocating and following your water use ordinance and your master planning, you know, you're going to be looking for additional capacity and, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to get off in the weeds a little bit. We have a county commission. Water use is important to the whole county. We have two county commissioners sitting here. You should be talking to your city county commissioners and figuring out, help us out. You're representing us too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's frustrating.
Thank you, Molly.
Jennifer, may I ask you one more question?
Please.
And I won't hold you to this professionally, but in your general professional opinion, how long would it take Garfield Township to have its own water resource?
I know.
Generally, three years, five years, two years.
I know, and it's a hard one. It depends, because there's two water sources. We could go groundwater, we could go surface water. And there's pros and cons with each one. We have done very high level review of both options. Obviously, I have a preference, and I don't want to get into too much detail tonight because it being a public meeting. But overall, I mean, first and foremost, it's getting Eagle support. You want to start with them. Because we are talking a large water supply, whether it's groundwater withdrawal or surface water withdrawal, and it's getting their support. I've discussed it with our local district engineer just broadly, but it's something that does have to go to Lansing and the Water Resource Division. And that can, that in itself can take time. It generally lends itself to be quicker than sanitary sewers. So I'm thinking, you know, for something like that, that probably, just to guess, would be a six-month process. Funding for you guys, that's, which can usually be more of a challenge, not so much for you guys. You guys are a little more fortunate where you've got bonding capability, you do have some in your enterprise fund to utilize. So bond, so financing isn't the struggle. It's probably just with Eagle, that would be a six-month process. And then working through property allocation and design, I would say three years.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
I mean, it can be, you know, just for a window, but it does take some time.
So I think we have a responsibility to do everything, because three years is running out.
Right. No, I, right, that's why, I know. And I, you know, and I think when we started this process with the city and first got the engagement, I, I know myself, and I don't want to misspeak for Mr. Corn, but, you know, I think it was just them just being, you know, wanting some things and making us aware of their concern, their issues, and it was just something we would get through with them. Cause there's always been a back and forth between jurisdictions, but this is just, they keep adding and compounding it. And it's just, if anything, we're getting further apart from each other, and there's just even more distrust, which is really unfortunate because that's never been the intent. And, you know, just a breakdown in communication. And then constantly, every meeting we have, no matter what it is, is there's a city attorney always present, which for me, always puts up walls. I can't get just a meeting with the engineering department. The city attorney always has to be present. And I know Chuck has experienced that as well. And that doesn't work for, illustrate much collabora, collaboration when that happens either. And I'm sure they have their reasons too. I understand, but.
Okay, let's go for it.
Have a quick question.
Go for it.
Chris, did you have a question?
Yeah, or, yeah. So all of the permits that are outstanding, those have all been approved by Eagle already?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're just waiting for the city?
And the city has approved them pending us addressing the April letter.
Right.
Okay.
Which.
Which we've addressed.
Yeah, exactly. We just got a letter to that point, what, Friday?
Friday.
And, and that was, to my point, even more reason to come to this board because they still keep using that as some type of leverage, and I don't know what more we can give them.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and devise a letter to the city commission regarding the water issue to be signed by our supervisor.
With a timeline.
With a timeline.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made, supported to direct, or ask Jennifer, and I can't direct her, she's not staff. Ask Jennifer to, to, or work with, work with myself and Chris to draft a letter. I will leave the ask of gallons to you. I would say maybe we add an ask of gallons equalling our 20-year projection.
Yeah.
If that's alright. And I'd be glad to sign it and we see where it goes, so.
Will you take it to the city?
If, if that's the best way to do it, I absolutely would. You know, ask it, ask it to be put on the agenda.
Better for the supervisor or better for the manager to do it?
I think the letter just should be from the town board, but I think either one could sign it.
Yeah, the wording would be, at a request of the town board, we're asking this to be signed by me.
I think on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And somebody has to deliver it.
Yeah, I would put it in their packet.
We ask it to be in their packet and we.
Yeah, because they'll just put it under, what, communication otherwise? Is that correct?
Yeah, ask them if you want to put it on the agenda.
Has to be on the agenda.
Yeah.
It has to be on the agenda, otherwise they'll put it in communications.
In that letter.
Yep.
And also you could see, see each commission when you send it, yeah, each commission member.
Copy and go. Alright, so the motion is on the floor to have Chris, myself, and Jennifer work on a letter from this board requesting additional water from the city, and it be put on their agenda, and I'll sign that letter and present it if possible, so.
I have one quick question before we vote on that. Does the attorney working on this need to know about that letter before we put it together or send it?
We've actually already talked to the attorney, and he, I think he recommended we do this.
Yeah, sorry, yes.
I didn't want to mess up any of the process.
Because, literally because it's in our contract. We're actually required to based on the contract, or we should have done it when we reached 80% of our capacity. So, yeah. Alright, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion secured.
Jennifer, thank you so much. We really appreciate you.
You say that now. Do you want me to talk about the commons then too?
If you want to, we, like I say, it was in their, in their packet, if you want to mention it, go ahead. You, you, go ahead.
Cause that may be one that, I guess, depending on the discretion of this board, how you guys want to move as well. It's related but not related. As many of you are aware, Barnes has had an ongoing water pressure issue. Since I've been your engineer, probably for 20 years. There has been multitude of opportunities to accommodate that and address the Barnes pressure issue from, coming from Garfield Township itself and followed on deaf ears, or it just wasn't a priority for them. But fast forward with the Barnes project that's going on right now, I think it definitely got to top of the list just because the fire department and building code aren't in a position where I think they can approve the project until they get the improved fire flow, is, is my understanding. I, I don't know all the full circumstances of the situation, but with that being said, last year, the Joint Rec Authority hired and retained HRC with some assistance from Gordy Fraser to do a asset inventory of the commons as a whole. And one of the items that came out of that was the lack of water pressure specific to the Barnes. And then it just, it stayed there. Mr. Cowell was very proactive and continued to emphasize the concern and issues with the pressure for the Barnes. And I believe some of the trustees were made aware of that situation. With that being said, there was some movement that took place that trans, I believe Sean Winter and John Syke became aware of a proposal that was presented by HRC to the city with some potential options in how to improve pressure. We weren't necessarily involved for timeline, looking back at emails and events, but fortunately John shared with me the proposal. This happened back in September to address the pressure issue. There's three options, all entailing tying to Garfield Township in some means or manner. So I'm glad that John forwarded that on to me. I then took the opportunity to reach out to Matt and also the engineer working on the project to make them aware that if they do have intentions, that they need to coordinate with the township because they're connecting to our infrastructure, and there's a process in place to do that. Ultimately, they forged ahead with a plan, and then at some point, I want to say in October, I know Chuck was involved in some of this, that there was some stakeholder meetings, and basically the project evolved very fast forward. We were involved in tidbits, more as a courtesy, I think, that, hey, we're going with this option and we're going to connect to your abandoned booster station. Oh, okay. You know, there was no request, no ask. It was just, this is what we're doing. And acknowledging, okay, it's going to help the Barnes. Well, then slowly through emails, that continued to evolve. Looking through my timelines, we're, oh, they're going to add in building 53. So then Mr. Raymond Minervini became involved and having access to residential customers. Through Brownfield, they had a funding source. Well, fast forward to November, now there's proposed future buildings included in this service. Mind you, tying into our abandoned booster station with all the water supply coming through Garfield and using our new Cedar Run water storage tank. So that started, obviously heightening my concerns because they're not only talking existing customers, but proposed customers, and to what limit? Again, using our infrastructure, so at least at a minimum, I was able to insert myself and make sure that we had the ability to review these plans, confirmed with Eagle, because they didn't believe they did, but. But they thought they didn't need an Eagle permit, which in fact, I confirm, they do need an Eagle permit from Garfield because they are using our infrastructure. And so we have to review those plans. So in that, in your packet tonight, you see that five-page letter. There's quite a few deficiencies and concerns I noted. But I guess the biggest thing being is, to use the city's phrase, of the detriment it has on our infrastructure. Is you guys built a tank, as you know, in 2016, or designed a tank. Myself and Mr. Corn presented an opportunity to the city to partner with us on that tank, to the city at that time, which they turned down and denied. And now fast forward, there's an opportunity and they feel they have the ability just to connect and use that tank. Because that's going to provide quite a bit of fire flow and domestic volume. And ultimately translates to about 40% of our tank capacity, reducing our life expectancy. So it was important to make that clear to them along with the review. And then also during that process, and again, these stakeholder meetings have comprised of city engineering, city attorney, city manager, myself. I think Chris has been now attending, Mr. Corn previously attended at times, same with John Syke. But there was never an ask. It was just, this is what we're doing. And no opportunities. And so I did, in this letter and then in a previous email, make it clear to the city staff that all of this still has to go to the township for their approval. Because not only getting the permit, but using and us sending water. We need to renegotiate and open up the water contract. And the city continues, continues to disagree with that, saying that the water contract covers this. But if you go back in and read the contract, which a couple of us are very versed in that, the contract's written for the city to serve us. Nowhere in that contract does it have situations where we're serving them. And so there's no accounting for any depreciation, use of infrastructure, cost sharing that should be reciprocated. When we're using township infrastructure, we have to pay our due diligence and proper fees. But in this situation, it's the reverse. And so none of that's accounted for, let alone access to our building, O and M costs, things like that. So that is why they're related but not related. Because they're in a position to permit new customers for themselves, but not for us. Which is, there's some irony there too.
And here's our infrastructure to do it. Molly had her hand up.
I'm sorry.
Molly had her hand up.
So I just want that to be full circle.
Everybody's going to have their hand up by the end of this conversation.
I know.
But Molly was first.
Okay, how can they approve the commons? When they will not approve six other ones that are on the schedule here?
That's, I know, that's, yep.
The Long Lake deal, they want to use our infrastructure and have a private thing with Long Lake also.
Pay them directly.
What in the world makes them think that that belongs to them?
It's, I know.
I mean, it has to come through this board.
Right.
Before they do that kind of stuff. And if this board needs to exercise a little authority, then we'll need to do that.
And through this process, it says, yes, as Chuck's been involved in the beginning, it was a very slow simmer. And then, you know, and then there just was a lot of assumptions and entitlements. So I, I'm glad that I was able to just keep coming to those meetings and sending emails. But I have to be honest, I was, you know, continued to get a lot of animosity and backlash from them. They did not like what I was telling them. But making it extremely clear, both in writing and verbally, that all of this is subject to the township approval. That you don't have, yeah, you, you can't connect to stuff that isn't yours.
Lainey, you had a question. Lainey's next.
So, and so does this, is all this going to be come off of our 5 million gallons, 500 million gallons?
Right.
So are they going to account for that?
So that's kind of, you know, twofold where?
There's, there's so many questions that we don't know.
Right, there's so many questions. And if anything, again, they were presented with an opportunity for cost sharing.
Well, I know.
Five years ago, turned it down. That still is a valid legitimate request. That if anything, if, you know, consistent with the previous letter you guys approved, if you guys want it, you know, obviously, there's a lot of data here I threw at you, but think it over. But I think it, if anything, would be prudent for this board to also send a supplement letter to the city regarding this project and the request, if it's their intent. And you've selected this alternative without conveying and getting our approval coordination that if anything, it's definitely appropriate, there's a cost sharing for use of our infrastructure. And some negotiations that need to be had.
Lori, you had a question?
Sue, this, I, I am your representative for the Joint Rec Authority.
And I don't know, right, if you guys are?
This did come up on the agenda in the last meeting. So my ask here is that you would help me be up to date on whatever's happening before the next meeting, which I believe is the first Wednesday of the month.
Jennifer, can you get, put something together for Lori? And Molly has a joint meeting tomorrow night, don't you?
I am not on the schedule for them to notify me yet, so.
I believe, can you check with John Syke and let Molly? I think, I believe the third Wednesday of the January is the joint planning commission.
Thought it was at the end, but I haven't had any communication.
But I, I wanted to give you a heads up. It could very well come up. Because usually Matt Cowell comes to those meetings and it may come up.
I might bring it up.
Right.
Well, maybe, okay. And Chris, before you go out, I just would like to say, I, the hypocrisy is so thick with this request. I don't know how to even look at it. Okay, no, we're not going to approve your, your, your five projects because we have bad data and we, we think you exceeded your 5 million gallon capacity one month in the last 25 years. Or whatever it is, I'm probably exaggerating. And, and no, we're, you know, we, we, we're, we're going to try to take over Long Lake and bill them directly and use your infrastructure. And, and all this is going on. And then they come back and say, we want to supply 600 residential units within our city that we will bill and use your infrastructure to do it. We're going to pump water from our plant through how many tanks and how many lifting stations and end up at Cedar Run Road. And then, and then reduce the lifespan of that tank by basically 50%. And just think that that's okay. Just think that that's a valid even request. It's just amazing to me.
Well, it's, and it, and it's definitely put me in a unique position because I'm just your engineer. And having no ability to mandate things or request things, or, you know, like you guys do. It, it was clear to them in the beginning, from what I could see, or stated at least to John, that the city was going to submit a memo to the township board for their approval. And, you know, there was tick marks and, but then it just gradually escalated to a point, you know, where you feel like you're committed and you have to, you know, where I'm in a position, oh, you have to review this over Christmas break. I mean, there's a lot of things, requests, record drawings we need, we're holding projects up. And so the best I could do was continually remind them via email and verbally that we're working with you through the permitting process. But this is not a decision where it's subject still to the township board, whether you're actually going to be able to turn the valve on and use the water. You have to address, you know, several items contractually, O and M. There's a lot of parameters and a formal ask needs to be presented to the board before the valve can get turned on, you know. And so I think by making you guys well aware of where we're at and, and again, another formal letter to that commission. Because they're just, there's been a complete breakdown in communication and what they feel was, is within their parameters they can do. And Chuck, maybe you?
Lainey, Lainey's got a question real quick.
And I'm sorry, Lainey, yeah.
Do they have access to our valves to do this?
No, no, because it's, yeah.
They can't with our approval. We have to approve it. They, they thought they could.
I, I don't know, that's?
They acted like they were going to.
They don't, they can't go in and access our things?
No.
Locked down, so they can't get in?
Right, it's all locked, yeah. And the DPW has keys. It's in an existing building.
I'm saying, they just can't go and hook up and say, oh, good.
The BPW director understands our stance and would not let that happen.
In the beginning, there was a sense that they, I thought that was going to happen. Because nobody, you know, and I explained the process to John, which then he relayed to people. But then, you know, no escrows were set up, nothing. And so I've just, yes, I mean, this has just been work, stuff I do for fun on the side for you guys.
Chris had a question first.
Yeah, and working with you through this, there was a time and discussion with the city where they could have partnered in increasing the capacity of the tank on Cedar Run.
Yeah.
Which, which would actually make it easier for us to go along with this plan.
Right.
Right, because it wouldn't adversely impact our long-range plan or our ability to serve our people effectively. Correct?
That's correct.
And they also had the ability, sorry Molly to jump in, but they also had the ability to partner with us when the Montessori school was built. We offered, we, we had the, we had the ability to require a Montessori school to extend the water main all the way to Silver Lake Road. And be probably within, how many feet of the Barnes?
Maybe 1,000 feet?
1,000 feet of the Barnes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and they rejected that idea as well. So we've given them two options. Because the, the, this, if it were just the Barnes, in the Barnes project, I'm, I'm all about trying to help the Barnes. Because it's a great project, it's, it's in Garfield Township, it's co-owned by us. There's, we have stake in the Barnes. And that's different. But now that it's all of the commons and then no limit on where they go from there.
That's the concern.
They can supply the whole west side of the city of Traverse City and we couldn't stop them. They would, they could make our tank obsolete in, in overnight, all right? So, no, they can't just hook up and they're not going to, okay? I mean, if, I shouldn't say that, I'm, without, there's just so many things. I mean, I've said from the first look at this, that let's deal with the five applicat- let's, let's get this gallons per day thing behind us. Accept the data we gave you as fact, which it is. Let's get these five permits that have been sitting out there since April, get those approved. Let's get this Long Lake contract to bed. Let's get, these all come first, before we even look at the commons. I mean, why would we leapfrog all this other stuff that we've been waiting for to take care of them? I don't understand how they even, how they even ask that. I don't, I?
Well, they didn't. I, I, and I guess that's a question, because it was a proposal that, like I said, John shared with me. And I think a couple of you have seen it, like in meeting invites. But I don't know with that proposal that their consultant submitted to the Joint Rec, I don't know who approves, approved that. Was that a collaboration of city and township? I, I don't know how that process goes.
Was it the joint rec that made the request? I don't know.
I don't know.
And who was on the joint rec? They wouldn't know.
But even so, they're not, aren't they, they're an advisory board or they?
Yeah, they don't have any decision-making power, especially over our water system.
Yeah, exactly.
And I know ultimately it went to, and then the city commission approved it. But it was clear with the three options, it was to connect to Garfield. So there was no, not at any point that it came to Garfield for you guys to have the opportunity to review it on its early onset stages.
What a great idea.
Yeah.
I mean, I?
So, and then, like I said, it was the Barnes and then it escalated and?
Patiently waiting to ask a question.
More customers, so, I'm sorry, yeah.
Go ahead, Molly.
It's not really a question. But I think that this community, Grand Traverse County, deserves some public dialogue about water. And hopefully, one of our media outlets will pick that up and, and apply some pressure to come, make this thing come to a head and be done.
Because it's, you know, there are options. I mean, if, if we resolved all our issues and we came to an agreement, we renegotiated our contract, and they wanted the cost share in the system upgrades it would take. Because as we sat down with the DPW director the other day, it says it's not, you know, it puts our tank on Cedar Run obsolete in, in half the years. But it puts tremendous pressure on the lift station on Silver Pines Road. It draws from the tank on McCray Hill, I believe. I mean, and, so the city, all, also part of their proposal, by the way, we want to sell you water. We want to pump it through 26 miles of your pipeline, through two or three of your tanks, use your lift stations. And we'll bless you with 15% more tied back from you.
Oh, you think there's a little?
Well, they think that's, I think that's good. Well, maybe 50%, maybe, but not 15. You know, that all the infrastructure's all, and they don't want to pay for anything to do that all. And, and the scariest part about this is, is the escalation. It went from the Barnes. We were talking about the Barnes. It was, hey, we're receptive. Let's talk about the Barnes. The Barnes needs water to do their project. And, and we're part of the Barnes, we're part of the joint rec. But they've taken it and, and expanded it from, I mean, what would the, what's the term? The dwelling units or?
Our residential equivalent units.
Yeah, the REUs, what would the Barnes be in REUs?
Uh, I think he had him at seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
Okay, so seven, uh, seven residential equivalent units. Now we're at 600. And no limit on what goes past that. And they just want us to sign up and say, go ahead. I, I just, I'm baffled. We only have 1,200 units on that now, in that tank. And they want to add another 700 immediately and then who knows how many in the future. It's just, it's just ridiculous, you know. And they don't want to cost share, they don't want to do anything but just take the water back. And not deal with anything we've been talking about. But I, I know we beat this to the?
No, so a lot of it, I just wanted you guys to know, I have done that evaluation once I finally got numbers, the plans from them on the 20th. And tried to be expeditious with them. But also make it clear to both them and you guys that in the closing of that letter, that, you know, we can work on a permit, but ultimately, approval for you guys to actually use the water. Several things need to still be addressed to the township board satisfaction before they're actually going to approve it. And, and before you can actually turn a valve and use that water. And making it, again, very clear, there's already been an email to that effect. I've said it several times verbally, and it seems to fall on deaf ears with a response back that it, no, no, it's already covered under the existing contract. And I very clearly, respectfully disagreed that it does not. And have made it known to them, like I said, in an email that I referenced and in this letter also. So that you guys know, it is, it should be your decision. So.
At this point, I don't know that we need to make any action on this item.
There's a lot to think about, right.
Until we make the official request for more water and try to get them to move on. Because Jennifer did send them the letter.
Well, I thought you were asking tonight for us to send another?
If, that's up to you guys. I, I know I've dropped a lot on, for the board. And, and maybe you have more questions for me after this, after you think about it. I, I do think if it were to move ahead, there definitely needs to be a discussion between the two boards on, you know, contract renegotiations and amendments to address specifically this location. Because this location is extremely unique to anything else. And to quote Mr. Corn, we, we can't give away water, you know, legally. And so the contract does require some amendment because this location, we are solely sending them water. Which is unique than any other location within the township and contradictory to the existing bulk water agreement, because they're sending us water.
Yeah, I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. But I would rather address them both together because they do kind of relate and piggyback on one another. And it's an issue that needs to be addressed sooner than later. So I, I'm in support of you drafting a supplemental letter to the one. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I feel like we should address both at once. Just because they're both pressing issues.
Molly?
So I think part of that original, and it might all be able to be on the same thing. I don't want 16 pages because they won't read them, but?
I'm really good at that, Molly.
Two, easy to understand. That this township, Garfield Township Board is not in favor of sharing that. This board has had discussion about it and this board is not in favor of sharing our water.
From the Cedar Run tank.
For some Cedar Run, I, I agree with it. I think, I think maybe one?
But they need to know, it's, this is not something we're just letting it float out there in some cloud.
Right.
We're concerned about it.
Right.
Yeah. I think one letter might be a good way to go and address both issues. We, we address the, we make the request for more water. A request to open up the contract for renegotiation now, if that's the case. And then this, then all these other issues can be dealt with in this order. The, the five outstanding permits, the gallons permitted, the Long Lake connection. And then after all that, we'll talk about the commons, you know, but not first. So I think, you know, probably Chloe makes a great point. It's a good thing to address with them. And Molly's point that let them know, no, this is something, we've read Jennifer's evaluation of it and we all agree, you know, it's detrimental to our system, you know. And, and that's a good way to approach it possibly.
Contractually, we can't do it, so it's?
Yeah, yeah, and it isn't even allowed under the contract.
It's not allowed in the contract.
What they're, what they're requesting, if we were, if we were in favor of it, requires a reopening of the contract. Because we don't?
Well, and I guess that's, that's the ask I have of this board is, is, one, is it something that you're willing to entertain? Assuming that the city, if presented, would cost share in our infrastructure and the impact. And if there were amendments to the contract to address access to the building, O and M costs, and cost sharing for the tank and other associated infrastructure. I guess that's, and, yes, I see what you're getting, Molly. That's probably what I should be asking, is if the board is, you know, agreeable to at least discussing it, then that can be offered in the letter. know, agreeable to at least discussing it, then that can be offered in the letter. If if you're no, we're only willing to and agreeable to want to serve the barns, well, then end of the situation or, you know, I guess what what are your thoughts?
I think the letter should contain language that says, in terms of the commons, this would be part of a new contract and nothing is possible for that until we address all of the other issues that need to be addressed in this new contract.
That's a good idea.
I think you should set a timeline on it that let them know that we have to make decisions for the future of Garfield Township. And so we need to have some meaningful discussions happening and some decisions made quick.
Right.
Six months, three months, whatever time you want to have because this just kick it down the road a little more will be two years or three years.
Well, we need to get it before spring.
Right.
We need to get it done with the next two months.
Right.
So that our developers can move forward with their projects.
They've got to be able to go. They've made their bids.
And it's it's they've held these projects up and it has really been detrimental to these organi- to these builders or these people that have they had to lay people off. Elmers laid people off early because they didn't have the the projects.
We did too because we didn't have, yes.
Because the city is holding this up since April.
Right.
This has gone on long enough.
Right. Well, and we, you know, and to our point, I mean, we made those attempts to be proactive, coordinate with them when we were planning our tank size, which is respectful. We didn't have to do that. But Chuck and I both met with city staff as a courtesy because there was an opportunity and we got our answer. We moved on and then here we are, what, you know, eight years later, oh, we're to just think that you can connect without.
They didn't want to buy it, but they'd like us to give it to them free.
Exactly.
Absolutely not.
And it's frustrating.
And the same thing coming from the Montessori school.
Yeah.
They they had no interest solving the problem at that point in time.
And and your planner also sent them an email too because I thought, okay, coming from me, I get it. And so I had, yeah, John also sent an email to their planning staff and engineering department and they weren't interested either.
All right. So you have your marching orders, Jennifer?
Yeah.
Just something up with Chris and and myself and let's get this thing drafted, get it to them right away.
We'll try to get through it this week if we can.
All right, sounds good.
All right, I'm sorry for taking up so much of your time.
I know.
Chloe, do you have?
I just want to say one more thing just to Jennifer. We just we appreciate you representing Garfield. I know it's probably been stressful for you to go through. I'm assuming, you know, a lot of pressure, a lot of conversations. And, you know, you said you worked on it during the holidays and stuff. So we appreciate you.
No, well, thank you. No, I know. Well, and like I told you guys, I that's my job and.
After the fact, to your point, Chloe, there was one particular meeting where we didn't have any of our representatives. I wasn't there, Chris. I didn't even know about it. And she was pretty bloodied when she came out of that meeting, you know, and that wasn't fair. I really wish myself or Chris would have been there. It would have been handled a little differently, I'm sure.
Or at least somebody else to hear it. I should have recorded. That's, you know, recording.
Yeah, yeah, so.
No, but I, yes, like you guys know, I mean, I I enjoy what I do. This is really frustrating. I'm frustrated for you guys. And as you know, soon enough, I'm going to be an owner in your township too and a water customer. And the whole thing is very frustrating and and I just I appreciate all your support very much. So thank you.
Hard for us to understand it too. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, the next item is the discussion of the township logo and website. I know you all have a packet. I know this was pre me being on the board, but I know I did sit down on some of the discussions. So Chris, what what did you want to do here or what was your want? How did you want to move with this one?
So just a little historical perspective for Lori and and Supervisor Joe. There was a committee convened to pick a company to redesign our website and our logo. And the committee was presented with six different logos. And the committee felt like, let's pick the best four that the committee felt were the best and present that to the board for their consideration of changing our our logo from its existing circle, you know, with the.
Four Seasons.
Yeah, the Four Seasons. So and I can't remember, Chloe, you'd have to refresh my memory. Did they provide the the original, like taking our original logo and changing it to versions one and two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was presented as like a seal option, having a logo and keeping that as a seal. But yeah, it was shown.
So, you know, this was the four different logo versions and the the seal, the different versions were presented to the board and there was just mixed reviews. And there just wasn't a decision to be made on which direction to go. What I can tell you is at that time, there was a lot of, well, there was support for going with a seal, but still using that as our logo, just using that as an updated logo and not really changing to one of the the other ones that were presented, which were like a waypoint, you know, something that looks like a windmill. And a lot of these logos, the company put a lot of effort in designing them. There's a lot of thought behind them, a lot of looking at Garfield and surveying people and trying to determine who we are. And they were trying to convey that in those logos. Now, I can tell you, everybody's different in how they view an image. Some people may appreciate the meaning behind it and other people just look at it as an image. And I think the board, you know, everybody we're a diverse board and everybody has their own opinion. And and for that reason, we really could not agree on on a logo to go with. There was a lot of support for what was a seal. So my thought was is to get this project across the finish line, get our website finished up, which, you know, is in need of repair, is to agree on on a logo. What are we going to do? And just move forward. So I provided all of the images that the company gave it gave myself and the committee. So you were presented with those. We also met so I could give you each some historical information and and just kind of discuss these. You know, my intent was not to sway anybody, but, you know, in our conversations, there was some some feedback that was given. You know, and it just seemed like overwhelmingly, everybody liked or, you know, wanted to go with the seal as our logo and and just kind of update what we have originally and not necessarily pick one of these other icons and necessarily use them at this point. Now, the discussion was, do we use those for email or business cards? Or do we just keep our, you know, this redesigned of our current logo and and use that moving forward? So I just want to have discussion on which way to go so I can proceed and, you know, get the website changed. The company is going to take the colors of logo and use that in the website design. They also, if you look through all the pages, there's also different fonts. And there's also little sayings that I know some some like, some don't. I I didn't feel like this board really wanted to scrutinize what the font looked like. I kind of felt like, you know, you would you could trust me to make a decision on a font. I I felt like the the taglines weren't really popular. So I don't know. I just looking for a discussion and interaction is all.
I may want to go first, Molly.
Sure. I always start out. I like the idea of having the logo, whatever one, whatever one people want. I'm I'm not married to the dark line around the outside or the white line around the outside or any of that. I think having just the barns in the background, probably not the best idea. I wouldn't mind having something that's commercial in the background on it because we are commercial, residential, recreational, you know, we know the things that we are. So that's that. But then on the when we have the website, if we could have the seal, one of those, and then have something that says Garfield Township. Any of these or with a block GT or something that's simple, people can understand that. I don't have to explain it to them. I I wanted to be able to look at it and know that that's us. So that's my thought.
I don't want GT. That's Grand Traverse. We are the charter township of Garfield.
Okay.
GT GT. You'd have to have GT GT almost.
GT, it says to me, Grand Traverse. I I didn't care for the GT at all. We are the charter township of Garfield. We are not just Garfield Township.
The only thing I, the only thing I.
I like one of the logo, the seal, the seals also.
If we take one of the seals, I just I looked at this and I've talked to Chris about it. If you looked at seal V2, let's just pick V2. Okay.
I don't even know what page you're on.
And there's two options there with white around or green around. Yeah, so the white around and green around. Well, I went back to that first page when they shrunk down the other municipality logos. The ones that have green around with white lettering, you can't even see it once it's shrunk down. But the ones that have white around with dark letters, you can still read it. So I would suggest the if we if we went with like that seal, we went with the white border with dark letters because even when it's shrunk down, you can read Charter Township of Garfield, Grand Traverse. It's just the one thing I would say.
The one thing I agree, I don't think the barn should be in there. That has really nothing to do with Garfield Township per se as much as, I mean, it does, but it's also the city. And I agree with the GT. I don't like the GT because it sounds like Grand Traverse.
I'd like to point out on the on the seal images, there's version one, version two, and then A and B. Really, the version one has more detail than version two. There's less detail. If you look at the pine trees, there's less snow on version two than version one. And then if and then the difference between, you know, obviously, the color is obvious, but A and B is the font. So if you look version one in Garfield and look at that G compared to B, the G is different font. So that's the difference between A and B and the and the versions.
Oh, whatever. I don't care about the font. Sorry.
Yeah, that.
You can decide that.
I would like us to try to get this to bed so we get the website up. I think what we're kind of losing here is the website needs to get up and running. So however we do with the logo, I'm open to, but we need to get the website going. So.
Well, it does. It does have to say Garfield Township. It can say, we already are saying, if we include both one of these and something else on the front page when you open up our website. This says Charter Township of Garfield, Grand Traverse County, Michigan. So it explains that. Those that's those. But I think it needs to say, it could just say Charter Township of Garfield. You know, it could say something like that. But I want them, when they open it up, they know what they're looking at. So they can look at this, but if it's just a little symbol on the side where top line on it is going to be what we are.
You know, the website, when it opens up, it could have that logo and our name. I mean, we it would have that in there. It doesn't have to necessarily be part of a logo.
Our name's already on it. But if it's just a little and you want some other information on that line, I'm not a web designer, but I like to be able to open up something and and this is round and it doesn't spell out everything that you're looking at.
Yeah.
So I I think when I go to a website, I don't want to have to think about what it is. I I understand the concept of color scheme. I mean, that's this blue and green. About the last four or five years, lots of different people are using that and that's great. I I it doesn't matter to me on that. But I do want people, when they open that up, we have a little logo over here. We better be saying Charter Township of Garfield or Garfield Township or something on the top.
And it would. It would be clearly who plays belongs to.
They know what they're looking at.
Yep.
Where do you want to go?
I, hang on, I gotta find seal five and six and nine and 12 and 72. Can I make a motion and then if it doesn't pass, that's a claim? I make a motion that the new Garfield Township logo be seal V2A.
With the white out?
Yes.
I'll support. Oh, go ahead, Molly.
We're all supporting.
I'll support it.
Okay, motion being supported that V2A, we are, V2A is the white, it's a white border.
Great.
And we'll open that up for discussion.
Molly, does that meet your or did you what? What are these little logo?
Do we?
I'm I'm just of the opinion that if somebody has to have it explained to them, what one of the leaves on that means or one of the lines on it means, it shouldn't be there. We're kind of a simple people here and I mean, not simple in any negative way, but we kind of like to just be real. And so that's my my opinion on that.
Any further discussion?
But other people should say if they if they like having.
I don't mind playing with me.
But I but I, you know, I, what I will add, as I as I look these over, I and I envision, I think I mentioned this in public comment or after the one discussion you guys had, the previous board had. You know, that there's, you know, at some point, I'd like to see us develop, you know, a, you know, a shortcut or an app for an iPhone. And at that point, one of these smaller.
Right.
Logos really would be appropriate to, you know, if we have a and I don't know how easy that the thing, I'm not a tech guy, but if you have the website, a quick, you know, a quick shortcut access on your phone to Garfield's website and you have trail maps and you have information and contacts. And at that point, one of these smaller ones, whichever one you would go with, that, you know, one, I'm just picking one, I'm one like this that has the same color schemes and designs from the seal or big logo. It's quick, you know, it's it's easy to reference because it's the colors and same designs. But that's down the road, but I'm just throwing that out.
We need to get that website up and running.
Yes, I I couldn't agree more. The website needs to be up and going.
Talk about the app, please. Well, yeah, if we're doing an app, then it makes sense to have something that can be identified.
Right, right.
But we can always add that. We want to get the website moving. We can always add that somewhere on the top of the website.
Yeah.
And then have it as an app to go for us.
Well, I think I think an app, and I don't know how you build them. I don't know what they cost. I don't know a lot about them. But, you know, you build an app that has trail maps, maybe restaurants in Garfield Township, maybe shopping centers, directions, you know, that that's something that people would use, you know, visiting here.
Trails.
Trails would be common. So, you know, I mean, I mean, I'm serious. There are a lot of things we could do, but I'm not the person. But at that point, what ends up on us on a phone, you know, those types of logos are small and they're, you know.
It's a symbol.
You look at I I showed Chris the other day, okay, you look at phone and the, you know, the quick access to Google is just the G. That's not the whole Google logo, just a small part of it. So I think there's some future things we could do with some of these other ideas.
Can I add on to Denise's motion that version 2A is our logo?
Yeah.
And that this one would be an icon?
Oh, I don't agree.
No, we we didn't, we.
That's fine.
I think we can revisit it later. I mean, we don't have a need for one.
The icon, we're just looking for a logo.
The icon, I think if we get do create a shortcut to the website or an a an app, I think that's when an icon will have to be used versus we wouldn't take that logo and shrink it that small.
Right, no, exactly. That's where I was trying to add an icon onto a logo.
All right. All right. Well, any other discussion on that?
So just to point out, and there was a lot of work that went into this, you know, going over the course of months. And, you know, the the staff looked at the website, the logos and everything. And so I think they just have to be recognized for for that.
V2A.
You know, and.
V2A.
I'm gonna have to cloud this. Sorry, it's late. Your comments about having Garfield Township and having a symbol with it is okay with me. And then we can transfer this to phones and other other things. And maybe people will eventually recognize. It just can't be the only thing that they see.
Right.
We'll have to agree on it. And right now, we got.
Oh, yeah. I don't think we're going to all agree on that tonight. I think that should be another discussion about an icon. I think that should be another discussion about an icon.
Would you prefer me to go back to the company and say, hey, give us some different options?
No, we have enough, I think we have enough options here now. We've done that, but I think what we need to do is to get the website going and get this on there. And then we'll deal with an icon later on.
Go ahead.
Because I think it's too much because we're not all gonna agree on the icon, that's for sure.
All right. We'll call the question. Motion made and supported for item two V A with the white and black lettering border. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Get that thing up and running and, and I would like Chris to tech into apps and that kind of thing.
Did some research, just come, some neat things out there.
Okay, thank you. Next discussion is item A, we added the M dot traffic replacement. And Chris, you can go ahead and tackle this one real quick.
Actually, I think we're, the org chart.
No, no, M dot.
No, that's under, that's under 8A.
Okay.
Sent.
Yep, and there's a couple of-
It's M dot.
We added under unfinished business, item E.
Traffic signal replaced.
Get around, looking up at the beginning, sorry.
Are we gonna be out of here by midnight?
Oh, we won't be much longer, I promise. I don't like these long meetings either.
Oh, neither. Well, you don't get one.
I, I think he already handed me, I know, I know what he's talking about, so. Put all this back where it was. Yeah, I'm sorry, Chris, I got it.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, I, you and I already discussed this, so I'm not.
So, last year, the board decided to cost share on the replacements of traffic signals at the Lowe's intersection and Myers. M dot is going to be replacing those signals and they originally would replace them with, you know, the new boxed wire look, which you can see at, oh, North Long and Medical Campus Drive. There's some on Keystone. Instead of just hanging a wire diagonal and hanging signals from it, it's like a squared off look. So we decided as a board to approve cost sharing to have them be the mast arms that we see at Zimmerman and Silver Lake, at Myers, on Silver Lake or Frankie. And the board at that point decided not to paint them, just to go with silver. Well, I thought about after we decided that, that, you know, we, we're really trying to, you know, have an image for Garfield Township, beautify it. And every time I drive by the one there at North Long and Barnes and see this big industrial monstrosity, the Tin Man, I felt like I did, you know, I personally would want to see that on, on 31. And I felt like I wanted to bring this back to the board for reconsideration.
What, wait a minute, I'm gonna say something here. I don't know if I'm on the line, but we've already made this decision.
Yep, you did.
So why are we bringing it back?
I, because we have two new board members and see if there is a differing of opinion. And also I, we did a, if you look, I gave you a copy of the inventory of our existing signals throughout the township and their colors and what they have.
I understand that, but I don't like this. This has already been a board decision that's been made. Because we have two new board members, I understand that, but this decision was already made and voted on. So why should we be bringing it back? I know, I, we shouldn't be because it's already been done.
Yeah, I, I felt like I could give you more information that we didn't have at the time, like the inventory of what other signals were on the township.
I understand that, and I think we talked about what other ones were on the township too. But at that point in time, it was decided to do the galvanized. So, I mean, are you second guessing us or we're, I mean, do we make a decision and then all of a sudden we have two new board members and we're gonna change that decision? I don't think that's right. This decision has already been done and already been voted on. That's my opinion.
Okay. I wasn't, I wasn't here involved in any of this. Did, did you guys at that time talk about green versus galvanized?
Yes, we did, yes, we did.
We did, and the, the concern was the maintenance.
We talked about the paint and, 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 you know, the green ones are really nice, but they do chip.
Mm-hmm.
And-
And they're powder coated, so you can't just-
You can't just squall it and paint it.
Yeah, you just can't go paint it.
You have to, and you can't take them down and do that. But they're not in bad shape either, I mean.
But there's some of them that are chipped and look bad too, so.
There's only, we only have two or three that are painted, right, in the township?
If you look at the second page, actually.
Second page, or most of them are painted.
Yeah, look at the second page, though.
Of all, of all the pet mast arm ones out there, there's only one that's not painted.
Yeah.
Oh, seven.
If you look at this, look at the second page.
They look nice and-
So-
Now.
Go ahead, Chris.
To Denise's point, we, I, I didn't have this. I know we, we discussed, we had some in the township, we didn't have this. Also, the maintenance aspect of it, I determined that they're not under warranty when you get them painted. And I really couldn't find information on the longevity of the paint job. So that information really wasn't available at the time either, so.
Well, yeah, I guess.
Have some information regarding warranty and longevity?
No, there are no.
No, there was none. No warranty and really-
When is, when are these gonna be installed?
So they're, can you ask that question again?
When?
Yeah, does anybody, when, when M dot's getting ready to install the Lowe's and Myers?
So they would go out to their contractor for bids in April.
So this would be $16,000 more.
To paint them green.
$16,000 more to paint them.
I don't know how much they, I don't know how many, how much you spend on them to begin with, I have no idea.
Yeah, so we're cost sharing at 60 to 80,000 per signal that we're cost sharing to upgrade them from the wire already.
Per intersection.
Yeah, per intersection. So 60, 80,000 estimate per intersection to upgrade to the mast arms. This would add 8,000 more per intersection to paint them.
$16,000 more.
$16,000 total, yep.
Chloe?
I, I had a different opinion than the rest of the board when we voted on it before, and I still feel that way that I feel like this is our major intersection in Garfield Township. This is gonna be Lowe's and Meyer intersections. And if we want to try to elevate the quality of Garfield Township, the consistency, our image, I, I know that matters to some people. That doesn't matter to others. To me, it matters. I feel like we should care about the, the things and the quality and the value. And to me, those galvanized posts look unfinished and eventually there'll be a dull gray pole. So I think maybe before when we talked about it, we didn't have discussion on what our vision is for the township as far as, you know, increasing, improving the quality of the township and creating the image of the township. When you go into the city limits, they have all pretty poles. You know you're in the city, you know? It's, it's creating that image. You're in Garfield Township, this is where we have quality, nice things, you know? That's kind of what I appreciate. And so I personally like them to be painted, but I'm just stating it again. I do understand Denise's point that we voted on it, but I think the intention was to bring more information to us because it was kind of just, it was just in Chuck's supervisor's report. I think he just asked and we told him no. So I think this was to provide more information, is, I'm trying to bridge the gap here, but.
I'll learn, so I'm just, I'm, I'm learning here because I wasn't here when it was discussed.
But I don't know how that works if we voted on something. I mean, I think you can change your mind, but.
It's already voted on now. That's the problem. We could go back and amend it or, you know, we gotta find out who did the original motion and-
Is a-
I think we can change the vote without-
I mean, you approved, you approved the installation of the mast arms.
Right.
Yeah, it's just why they were painted.
The only thing was difference was whether it was gonna be galvanized or painted. That was the only difference. We approved the mast arms and the only thing was difference was whether we were gonna paint them or it was gonna be galvanized. And the board at that-
Galvanized, one of them's painted.
Right, the board at that point in time said that they wanted them galvanized.
Right, right.
But now we have more information on what the costs are gonna be. I guess I gotta go with Chloe. I, I wouldn't mind them painted. At the time we voted on it, I didn't mind them painted. So I don't know what the rest of the board, I guess, take a vote.
Maybe we need to make a motion and vote on it.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we paint the mast arm, new lights that are going in at two locations.
Should we be rescinding the other motion that was made?
I don't know that we need to do that. I mean, we've, we've approved the mast arms. Now that we're approving them to be colored, I don't think it, I don't think it changes the original motion. I think it just, it's an additional expense.
But the original motion said galvanized, not painted. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, well, I mean, the, the second motion can just, the motion he's, she's making can just, I don't know that it rescind, I don't think it rescinds the original motion, but was there a cost center this came from, the original? Where did the money come from?
Well, it's for the 60 to 80,000 and now we can make a motion to go ahead and upgrade to the 16,000 for the new painted.
Yeah, I just didn't know where the money came from. Do we have to identify where the money's gonna come from?
No, it's from a-
We have the metro fund that we have to spend within the roadway.
Okay, there's money in that fund to do that, okay.
Can I just ask, they're not being replaced just to be painted, right? They're going to be replaced.
No, they are gonna be replaced, and they're not wires.
Yeah, they're being, yeah, they're, they're replacing them. So the point is, if we, if we chose to go with green, we need to make that decision now because when it goes out for bid in April, they'll bid them as green and, and order green and install green.
Got it.
That's why that's, it's a little bit of an urgency, whether we do it or don't do it.
Do you support the motion? Well, I don't know, do we need to amend the previous or?
I don't think we have to rescind the original motion.
We need to know who.
I don't even know when or any of the dates or any of that. I think we can go ahead and, and make the motion, which I did, that we paint the two new mast arms that are, or the two new intersection arms that are coming in at a cost of $16,000.
I'm gonna support that. Can I make a comment or do I wait? I think in general though, we should evaluate maybe in our capital improvement plan if this is something that we would like to do in general, just as a, as a township. Because then we're not just off the cuff making decisions. Do we want to do it here? Do we want it? We can actually have a plan. This is what Garfield, this is what we would like. This is the quality we would like. That when we do get an opportunity to upgrade a street, like, would we like them to look all the same? Would we like them to match? Like, I like the idea of having a, a plan money-wise to budget for it, budget for the maintenance, but also to just make sure that we're not just making decisions here and there. But we can say, we have a plan. You know, this is what the board would like to do. So I just want to make that comment. I think that would be easier than just, you know, willy-nilly making decisions on if we're gonna paint or not paint things. Because then you don't, it doesn't, it's not consistent, it doesn't look.
And I, and I, when I looked at it, I hadn't, I totally knew nothing about this, but there's two things. I, I do really like the looks of our mast arm intersections and the green ones. They, they are very attractive. I know it's hard to be, oh, what a great looking traffic light, but they do look nice and, and that. But probably what swayed me to even, you know, say, hey, Chris, I think this is worth asking is, we've got seven out of eight that are green. You know, I think we have a, we have a trend here. I, those are gonna be very visible, Lowe's and Myers. So I, I think I'm okay with it doing it myself, so.
I'm not saying that I'm not okay with it. I just don't like how it was presented. Once it was already done and then brought back because of something else. I do not agree with that at all. When we vote on something, we vote on something. We don't bring it back because someone changed their mind.
It's a roll call.
Yep, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, and we have a roll call on that?
Yes. Cumber?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Schmuckle?
No.
Lap?
Yes.
Laney McManus?
Yes.
And Joe McManus?
A yes, okay.
And you know my reasoning why the no vote was.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I understand. Okay, under new business, item A, a consideration of adopting a township organizational chart.
Can I ask a question? What's the difference between 1-9 and 1-14? I got two of them here.
Okay, so, so if you look at the clerks, staff- They both report to the clerk.
I wasn't asked.
Yeah.
Oh.
I wasn't asked, I asked if he amended.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
We had further conversation.
I was looking at the, I wasn't looking at the line, sorry.
It's, it's, it's a, yeah, because that, otherwise, you know.
I understand, I understand. Thank you.
And then the, down at the bottom, building and land use.
Uh-huh.
So I envisioned those of staff who support those departments. So, you know, we have Jamie Douglas who will do some administrative work to assist and support both of, all three of those departments, actually. So that was the intentions of that. You know, we have, does everybody have the one with the?
1-14?
Yeah, yeah, okay. And, you know, we may have, and again, this is just organizational structure. It identifies rank, who reports to who. And this could change tomorrow, you know, if we change the way we do business. Soil and erosion, do we need to be more detailed in how that's structured? If the, you know, the treasurer adds an assistant, do we add, you know, we may need to add, you know, change it and amend it. So this is a starting point for structure and, and it's something, like I said, could be changed over time as we change as a organization.
So, so do, do we need to adopt this or just make this as just a guideline for our organization?
As a guideline would be?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I looked at it, I, I told, I don't know that it needs to be adopted or just, or just accepted or however you want to look at it, but I, I think it doesn't, it does function as, does, takes care of one item that's kind of been hanging out there. You've clearly got the clerk and the treasurer and the supervisor gets a little box there. But anyway, the, you know, there, but then the staff knows they, everything funnels to the new township manager. So the line doesn't go from zoning department to clerk or planning department to treasurer. It clearly states, hey, you know, here's, here's where things go, you know? And if, if we don't, if it doesn't accomplish anything other than that, it, it just, it's clear to the staff where everybody reports to. I don't know that needs to be adopted because it's gonna be a leaving document, maybe amended.
I don't think it should be adopted because if we end up going to like soil erosion and everything else, we're gonna have to adapt it and change it again and adoption. I think it should just be a guideline, myself.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a great tool. I think, glad you put it together.
I, I think the purpose of it is to tell people who they work for, so which department they're in. So my question on it was, we've got building and land use. If they're, whoever is doing that job out of the planning department is not working for John when they're doing building and land use, they're working for Mike or however we set that up. So somehow I think we need to designate, I mean, those people have another square, but when they're, when they're doing.
There's one assistant.
One assistant.
That's what you do.
Building and land use assistant.
So he has enlisted other all three departments.
All three departments.
So depending which department she's working in, that's who she answers.
Does she do building and land use work in the planning department?
It's permitting and administrative work is what it means by definition.
It's all part of that, then. Okay, well, that was my question.
There may be, there's an S there.
Who's the boss at that time, you know?
We could add later, but we have one now.
Who's the person they report to when they're doing that job?
Yeah, so Jamie Douglas is working with, sorry. If Jamie Douglas is working with Mike Green about a zoning matter, she's reporting to him on that topic, but I'm ultimately responsible for the whole department and all the staff. If that makes sense.
Yeah, and then if she's working as the building and land for the building department, I mean, the planning department, she answers to John. So she's one person doing three jobs.
She helps Carl a great deal.
Yeah.
So she, so when it says the three, the three, the three different colored boxes that say building and land use assistant, that's one person today. And she could be in any one of those three departments. So if she's doing building department work, she answers to the building official and so on. So if that makes sense, I think it does to me. I mean, it's, it's good, it's a good chart to have out there and, you know, I don't think it hurts to have it.
Yep, I could change one thing. The assessor.
We just talked about that.
Not, there's no head assessor, just the assessor.
Is the assessor in?
There's only one assessor.
Is he really over the assessor or does she answer to the department, the state department?
He is over the assessor, yes.
He's over the assessor, she's, one of my, one of my title, I'm the head, I'm the assessor, the assessor or something, right?
You're the, you're the-
Chief assessing officer.
Chief assessor.
Yeah, chief assessing officer.
Assistant of record.
A record, yeah.
I know nothing about assessing and I hand it off to her, but yeah, so, but she still answers to Chris.
The chief legal officer too.
Yeah, I know that, yeah.
The chief legislative officer.
I think we should just, this is a guideline.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's good, good information.
Accept and file.
Make some tweaks on that, the thing like he said, take this assessor on there and, and it'll be breathing if we add things. You know, you can always adapt it and just reissue, post it somewhere.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We're okay with that. We're on to our last public comment, so. Jennifer said you want to get up, tell us some more about water.
Okay.
There you go. I don't see anybody running up for public comments, we'll close public comment, any of the business come before the board?
I have one question or favor, and I know that when we were at our last meeting, we did all the committee reports, and we kind of moved things around, and this person and that person, is there any way that we could get a copy of who's on which committee?
Yeah, just republish, republish our final version of it.
Yeah, the final version, because there was like, an alternate, and then that one